Good evening, welcome to the Board of Select meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to a start February 27, 6:32 PM. We are meeting in hybrid tonight, we have two audience and citizens on the line, just for my And first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes in the regular meeting held on January 23rd.
I'm going to leave for a minute.
A second.
One or two things. Aye. Okay, audience and citizens, so if the public's reminded to state their name. For the record, in comments should be kept to a maximum of five minutes, it's not really a question and answer period, but more of a chance for the public to adjust the board. So I have a...
I'm Jordan, West Elm Street, Deep River. My attendance at the Board of Ed meeting last Thursday seems as though, in my opinion, the Board of Ed, the regional Board of Ed has kind of failed in their fiduciary responsibilities to the taxpayers, and that there seem to be those quite good knowledge of the condition that John went up through in high school prior to pushing through the referendum for the athletic field. How can the citizens in the tri-town area, and then it's supposed to be Deep River, approach the concept of withdrawing or pulling back on that referendum to allow that to be revisited at a future date after the school issues, which apparently were much more than the almost $6 million they're looking for, to improve the repairs to that school are spent because apparently by the information we got at that meeting is quite a bit more ago. And you know, if your system is failed, you cancel the in-ground board. And I think we can't be alone in Deep River in saying that this problem here and that we've got to address it, because the other question is, why are they not telling us about the regional at this point? And our education budget is the largest part of our town budget from all three towns, and I think that that needs to be seriously addressed. I do, will in the past petitions, and I'm sure many other people would, is we claw back that $10 million from the athletic fields, because if we don't have a school that's open and give quality education, there's no point in athletic fields. That being said, I'd like to express my support for Stacy D'Amello, she has a proven track record, I think she'd be a great candidate for the EDC. For too long, our EDC has been rather moribund. And also, the other candidate, to my recollection, put a letter in during the elections race, and that's fine, you got elected, but was basically, you vote Democrat or don't vote at all. That's not what we're about, we're about a community, and we need to look at it that way, and I don't know if that's the best candidate to have. I think Stacy's certainly well qualified. Lastly, I'll say that Catherine Russell, I think, is a good candidate for the Estuary for the Transit District, and should be pushed into, put into that position because she's got the time, she's got the business smarts, and the availability.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Christina Flory of Rosemont Drive, I'm here to, I've been into the library board, it's, I'm very excited about it, I have two young children in town, I'm a former educator, my husband is an educator, and I'm very excited about the opportunity, so I just want to get a little help and introduce myself to you all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online? Oh. You unmute yourself.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Excellent, so I want to share just three things very quickly.
Okay.
First one is I want to thank the Board of Selecting for their transparency and openness, the new administration has been really great with sharing information and being transparent, which is very much appreciated. Second is, I think for your work on EDC, as someone in their person pointed out, it's been not a very productive committee for a long time, and I think the work that we're doing now to revitalize it is really going to help the town, so thank you for that. And another thing quickly is, I know you'll be talking about the projects up for proposal tonight in ARPA, I just want to draw your attention to two of them, both of them address the needs of people with mobility issues, so I'd ask you to think about the folks that this would benefit, rather than organizations that are presenting them. We know we have some mobility access issues in town, and so, as I said, both of these address those needs. I remember Vanessa Seppert had been launched, and I witnessed, what must have been an annual loan with two pains to walk, she has her bag, she has another bag, trying to get in and out of the nest, it was painful to watch, so just, I ask you to think about that, the audience that's being served, the folks that are being served in those two projects. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, the next we're going to have a discussion on bonding payments made by the town sewer projects. Catherine has done a lot of research, and would like to do a final presentation for us, and we have them given the handouts prior.
I'll take them back, I'll use my little...
I don't have one in front of me, so this is fine. So, we've talked a few times in the Board of Finance meeting, in our meeting, first of all, we're trying to shape costs as much as possible, grow revenues as much as possible, and we're looking at working on our budget. The discussion came up, is there a possibility for the WPCA to pay a portion of payments? And I looked at this little deck, and on page four, it shows that we're paying our cost of carrying principal and interest a year on sewer bonds is $350,000. We have three that are active bonds related to the sewer, one of them retires in two years, another retires in 2055, we can see that far ahead in the third of 2056. So, those are out there, and I looked with Bud Eckert off on this, and we went into the vaults, and looked through all of the auditors' reports to get a sense of what has happened over the past 20 years or so, in terms of payments, and it's, if you'll see here, page five, it's been a mixed history, color-coded disc. The ones that are green are of the years, that's 2007, '08, '09, '10, '15, and '16, where the WPCA and the town itself shared the cost. In 2011, '12, '13, and '14, the WPCA pays the whole cost of bond payments and interest. Since 2000, looking at the '16, '17, in 2017 on, the town has paid the full cost. We also did the research and looked at, what is the cash balance with the WPCA? And it has varied a lot over the years, to a point where they had only $200, and it grew up to where they had an excess of $500,000. And the last three years have been robust years for them. So we pulled this together to begin opening the discussion, and what we wanted to do is we talk about it amongst us, then share with the Board of Finance, and figure out how to open the discussions, and then open them with the WPCA. I think one of the actions when we did talk about it was approaching the WPCA and asking, again, because they're under their own statute, because it's an authority, not under the town, which is, the thought was maybe to ask, as a good neighbor, would you consider helping the town pay some of the bond? And I'm still, I'm still forward, you know, I'm still forward with doing that.
I think we're united on that front.
Do we have a figure in mind?
I'm just curious, a lot of us were in the office at the time of why, we paid it, and then it was shared, and then we didn't pay it, and then it was shared, and then it was all, you know, I don't understand the history there.
Well, I think some of the doing, we were feeling unsure at times, but not going through these auditor reports, and then we looked back to when new bonding happened. So when it moved from into a shared payment was when a new clean water bond was taken out, and I think that's the one that expired in two years. I don't know why it went into WPCA paying for it all. I think there had been some old wives' tale, or folklore, or whatever you want, but there was some trading between accounts with some problems with the school budget, this is what we've heard, but we did not find any documentation to that effect. So then when we went back to shared payment, and then we did another trench of financing when we did the Hurley-Nerestory extension, and I don't know if it was when we did that bond, this is also when Smitty passed away, so, you know, we don't have records of why it was decided. You know, maybe another step would be to audit all the members from the selectmen, or selectmen meetings at the time, if you wanted to be able to do that, to get a little more reason, but what we do see is that there has been variation in how it's been handled. And also, some of the years, you know, some years, they're, one year they had close to $600,000, $500,000, $500,000, other years they don't. So I just think maybe with some more for the WPCA, where we're looking at, what are their capital plans, what is their projected return, could they factor in? You asked how much, I think?
What is, I'm looking forward, because we have a...
Fifty percent would be great, but I don't, I don't think we're going to get it, whatever they would like to contribute would help us out.
Should we ask for $50,000 or $100,000?
I'd start on the sharing of the 50%, so that'd be around $5,000.
Too high, isn't it?
Okay.
It's just a lot of money.
So the town takes out these bonds because the WPCA cannot, as an authority, they cannot take out their own bonds. So we have Doug, you've talked to many a lawyer on this, and thank you for compiling it all, because multiple conversations, it's nice to have it all on a piece of paper.
I will tell you, it helps that Bud has a PhD in finance.
Kudos to Bud. We are lucky to have him as the chair of our Board of Finance.
Thanks.
All right, so should we make a motion to present us at the Board of Finance meeting? So move.
Second.
Okay, and we'll go for 50% ask, and then we'll negotiate from there. We have a few more people, okay, a few more people online, everybody can hear me okay? Thank you for joining us. So Russell and Gates. Great. I've got my little notes on the side for Board of Finance, okay. Great. Next thing on the agenda is appointments and reappointments. So we have Janet Klink, who would like to be appointed to the Park and Rec Commission, term to expire 2026. Frank Santoro, EDC, term to expire 2026. Stacy D'Amello, EDC, term to expire 2024. Christina Flory, Library Board, term to expire 2025. Which, I guess at this point, I should say, I'm sorry to inform you, but we looked at the makeup of the board, and the boards have to be made up of, you know, if there's seven members, you do three, and four is fine, but typically, you have to have the same number of Democrats, Republicans, and it has to be sort of a nice mix. And right now, the board is very Democratic.
If I can add a little color on that, I guess that, Amy, our town clerk, spread this out for us, it depends on the number of people on a board. So with the Library Board, there are nine, they have nine members, and they have a maximum of six that can be Democratic, and they're added. For example, when we go to the EDC boards, we're not at a maximum with anything, and it doesn't have to be equal, it's just a maximum of, from one party, and it could be maximum unaffiliated, maximum Republican, maximum Democratic.
They try to even distribute it, but they can't, typically. So you were terrific. So we were all very disappointed because you were going to be a shoo-in, so.
If she changed the party affiliate, does that work?
We looked into that, and it's a three-month delay, according to our town clerk. You could be considered again for that.
I mean, there might be a member that was planning to, you know, step aside, that we don't know yet, or something, so if, you know, you know better, then maybe that would get you on the board faster, but we're very disappointed for you, so thank you so much for volunteering, you know.
It's so hard when people step up, they're pleading one volunteer, and we can't accept it because it's all these rules.
And it's unfortunate, because everyone works so well together, it really doesn't matter, you know, but you have to follow the rules, so thank you.
On the EDC one, I have a chance in the audience, people. Just one of Stacy's, it's S-T-A-C-I-E. I'm just curious how we picked to put one person in the year 2024 expiration, one in 2026, anyone would even...
That, the town clerk did, but I don't know why, if she just went down the list, we can certainly flip that around. I mean, it's up to us right now, and we're making appointments, so.
The one thing I would say about Stacy D'Amello is that she has really concrete experience that applies to this, is what she did with merchants, growing the business. I have spoken, if we're just talking about EDC, I've spoken to both of them, I think both are, are fine.
Oh, me too, and we have more than one vacancy.
Exactly, so I looked at Stacy in the 26, that's fine with folks.
I'll make a motion to put Stacy for 2026, and I'm trying for 2024.
Okay. And then, do we want to vote on the first three? Janet Klink, Park and Rec, term to expire 2026. Frank Santoro, EDC, term to expire 2024. Stacy D'Amello, EDC, term to expire 2026. Can I have a motion?
Motion to accept Janet Klink, Park and Rec, term to expire 2026. Frank Santoro, EDC, term to expire 2024. And Stacy D'Amello, EDC, term to expire 2026.
I set my motion, okay, any discussions? All taken.
Aye.
Okay, Estuary Transit, we have two candidates that are registered. Angus McDonald has come forward again for reappointment, and Catherine is interested. So can I have a motion to open this up for discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. So Angus McDonald, what are we thinking versus Catherine? One over the other. One's a reappointment.
It's a hard decision on both, especially Catherine sitting here, and Catherine wanting to be involved in it on a regular level of assignment, and I agree 100%, except one part at the end here, when you refer to something with DOT. I've already provided Carol, Commissioner of DOT's correct email, correct phone number, we're working on that, so again, no disrespect here, but too many hands in the broad sometimes will spoil it, and I think we should follow one path, so that's one just as one part of with the DOT. There's other communities that don't have a selectman that are part of this group, so it doesn't have to be a select person, but I'll make a motion for Angus. Catherine, you do an excellent job on, you know, some other things.
I'm still discussing, still...
Oh, yeah, we're still discussing, this is just... I'm just, you know, making my, my points.
Are you done?
I'm good.
Okay. Do you want to run next?
I do, thank you, Carol. I know we talked about this, it first came up on the 12th, and I expressed my interest in sending an email, we discussed it at the Board of Select meeting on the 23rd, we tabled it for two weeks. And then I sent an email, which I'd like to read into the record, I sent it on January 29. "Carol, in an effort to better understand the board member needs at the River Valley Transit," which is what it is on the website, "I spoke with Joe Conover, Executive Director, and with Leslie Strauss, Board Director, Chair," she's Chair of the Board. "Both said that Angus has been helpful in his role as board member over the past eight years. His skills and knowledge from the surveying business were mentioned. We spoke about the possibility of Angus contributing, continuing to support the work of the River Valley Transit in the role of a contract consultant, as opposed to as a board member with a new four-year term. During the past two years, there's been a lot of change if the two bus transit systems merged to form River Valley Transit. There's also been a natural change in the board's composition due to town elections, changes in board members' lives and responsibilities, et cetera. Deep River's seat on the board has been filled with the Deep River Selectmen for the past 18 years, although being a selectman in order to be a board member is not specifically required. I have the time and interest to serve on the River Valley Transit Board. This board works closely with the Department of Transportation. I think that it would benefit Deep River to have additional experience, knowledge, and strong relationships with the DOT on the permanent board of selectmen, as well as having a board member who would communicate back to the Deep River Board of Selectmen, and to the town consistently and effectively. Please let me know if you want to discuss my point of view on this board's working So, I think the DOT connection is terrific, but I stand by that, I think we'd break the Deep River one with that. I will also say on this, that the thinking is for everything he did as a selectman, and for eight years of service on this board, I think it's time for a positive change. I think it would be an exception to not put a selectman on this board when that's been the practice for almost two decades, and I think also, people have strengths and other strengths in communication and administration, I think can't really make a difference with me, without putting too far a foot down. So, thank you, if you have any thoughts.
Okay. Well, my thoughts are, and I appreciate where you're coming from, but I actually got personal phone calls from people on the River Valley Transit that asked Angus, for me to reappoint Angus. They're in the middle of working, trying to find a location of a new building or something, and they really find his work with them invaluable, they don't get to continue. I've spoke to Angus, he's fine with, once they locate the building, resigning, and then at that point, we can come back and convene and readdress a reappointment.
I'm not at all comfortable with that. In fact, I kind of think exceptionally that the Chair reached out to you, she reached out to Dwayne, as everybody's all of the same party, this is not supposed to be political, may not have meant to be political. I, when I heard that, and you told us that she had reached out to you, I then said, well, I'd like to...
And I specifically told her to reach out to you to talk to you.
She didn't do it, so I called her, I had a conversation with her, I had a good conversation with, with the director. I'm also not comfortable with appointing somebody, and I don't think anyone should be for a four-year term, and saying, well, maybe she'll resign if the issue is something, particularly since I already discussed with the Chair and with the Executive Director that on that issue that they're working on, they can certainly maintain the same contract basis. I don't think it's appropriate to appoint him to a four-year term.
Okay, yeah. Well, on a personal note, I don't know if we want this on record or not, so I won't put it there, I guess.
Okay, I'm gonna say, we have bigger fish to be frying in our community right now than worrying about this appointment. This appointment is important, but we have bigger bonding issues that we have to work together as a team. I will pull back, I will support you, I'm not 100% happy with, but I will support you, because I'm going to look at the better for the community and the bigger issues that we have versus putting one on a committee. It's important, but it's not as important the other issues that we have for her. So I will pull mine back, I will vote for Catherine, that's where I stand, so, like I said, we have to work together, we shouldn't be fighting over something of this magnitude.
I have everything I meant to work together with you on the big issues that are facing the town.
But I will say, but I will say, Catherine, and I'm not scolded and go, oh, gee, but I have direct links to the Department of Transportation.
Right.
I have that commission, Carol and I have, I share that with them. Sometimes we have too many people going down the same road, accidents happen, so I will support you, but if there's anything to do with DOT, it should be directed at the first one.
I'm very comfortable working directly with Carol and with you, and will not step over Carol on things, she's made very clear, and we've all made very clear, she's voted as the first one, and she's the voice on major town issues, but if appointed to this board, I look forward to developing a third set of skills and knowledge on DOT.
Well, I guess then I should share, so the people that you spoke to did call me, and they asked me not to appoint you, they didn't think, they thought the group works very well together, and they didn't think you would be a good addition. So I was, I thought Dwayne was not going to vote for you.
Why would I not be with addition?
Again, we're on record.
Yes, I hope so, sorry I'm asking.
Oh, they just didn't think you worked well with people, they didn't get a good sense of that you worked with the people that are around here, so we thought we'd go with Angus and kind of...
Well, thanks for sharing that, we appreciate that, a little surprised at it, because I very cordial, we prefer giving a conversation with you, Jordan. But, thank you.
Angus, again, I was not going to vote for her, but again, I'm stepping back, I'm doing a betterment for the community, and I don't want to divide us on something of this magnitude.
I agree, but I...
We have, we have major, major financial things coming down the road that the three of us are going to have to meet together, so...
Okay. So do we think putting someone on there that was, we specifically asked not to put on there, is a good thing for the town?
They don't want me to have a board with me, do we want to put somebody on as a selectman, when that's going to be junior, there are many ways to go there.
But only in Deep River, not across the board, there's still a lot of people appointed that are a selectman.
Yes, definitely.
So, don't hold on to that, Esther.
I don't have no problem going, and I have no problem speaking to each of the people, giving back, and building a good rapport and good relationship with them.
Well, if you think you can do that, I don't want to break the town with appointment.
I am very confident that I can do that, you know, my commitment, I'm willing to do that. I have no, no sense in any way that, anyway, I would act on that board, but in any way, break the town.
Okay, well, I'm going to take your word for it, if you give any negative slack, I'm going to have to connect you. Okay, so you're going to make a motion to appoint Catherine.
I'll make a motion to appoint Catherine to Estuary Transit.
Okay, Jones will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so the other Transfer Station Advisory Committee had quite a few volunteers step up, so we appreciate that. At this time, we weren't able to touch base with everybody, so we're going to, we tabled that, and the same with the P&amp;Z appointment, Dwayne and I weren't able to reach out to the gentleman, I haven't put his name in, so if you're watching us, we haven't forgotten. Number six, A, the ARPA expenditures. So we, a couple weeks ago, I think it was the beginning of February, we had invited everyone back, then had proposed a request for the remaining ARPA funds, and we had a nice town meeting upstairs, and people presented, and we kind of got down to the final one, two, it's eight, eight requests. So we made up a table of the eight requests, and the three selectmen went through, rated everything one through five, except for Dwayne, I see number seven on here.
I'm already...
So we are going to come up with our recommendations, and then we bring it to the Board of Finance, and then we would have to go to a... and then we would have to go to a town meeting for the town to vote. So, the town meeting at this point, we haven't set the date yet. That'll be our number seven thing here on our agenda at the website. So, don't despair. You all have a voice in what finally gets approved here. So, the first thing on here is the Heritage and Tourism Corridor that was presented by Jerry Roberts. Jerry's request was for $50,000 or any amount to see the program, which had different pieces, such as creating a walking, driving, biking map with points of interest, signage, educational signs, and then connecting us to the state tourism site, a video for posting, a documentary on YouTube, exploratory outdoor panels, and some printed brochures. So, I see Duane had authorized something on his. Catherine put something on hers, and I have something on mine. So, that looked like, you each have 35. I had up to 50. So, I was willing to, just Jerry said, any component would work.
That's great, too. Both you and I put it as number one. Are you and Duane number one and mine number two?
So, since we all, since you have 35 each, both, and then I have up to 50. So, you wanna do 35 and number?
But I have extra money now because I, if you said you wanted to one to five, I got six extra.
Oh, no, 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 no. It was just to rate them. I actually gave. I have two number ones and two number threes. Just meaning they meant the same to me as important, you know. And they all were very worthy projects, absolutely. Very hard to figure out where the money goes.
I think 35, we can hear a great presentation and become, I don't know, we have to refine it as to what we wanna do it for. But I put, I thought the browse panels, the virtual tour on YouTube would be a really solid beginning.
He's, he designed it. He's a professional. Let him use the money how he feels to get a one bang for the buck.
I would say, whatever, whatever you offer, right, even if it's only $10,000, that's fine. It really is with me. It's just then we would get together and decide out of that wish list, which do we think are the most? Where are we gonna get the most bang for the buck? And that's what I'd like to do.
Okay. My thought was maybe to hold off on anything printed until we figure out what the distribution of that kind of item was gonna be.
I would start with the tour routes, something like, but that's something we can discuss another time.
Yeah, okay.
So, you do a little 35?
So, we'll do 35. We'll present 35 for that one, number one. Okay, then my second one was, well, should we just go down the sheet?
Do you wanna talk about what we think is, are there number ones first? Does that make sense?
Sure. So, my number one was Jerry's, and then I also had the public art, and that was presented by Brett Thompson, working with local artists and merchants in schools that would really be installed downtown, draw a lot of attention downtown, which is what our goal was, to get people downtown. So, those were like tied, number one. Excuse me, was the tourism thing and the art. I thought they really tied together nicely and had the EDC component to it.
I had Jerry first and Brett second, and downtown third.
I had, I guess, not enough, the downtown Deep River Master Plan, I put that as first. And I know we've chatted about this before. I just feel that the whole planning part of planning has only, has been underfunded for many, many years. And I propose that we invest three of the key elements, not the whole plan. $105,000 within order of traffic study, signage, and accessibility. Those are amounts that we could cover that. And if we had to peel back anything, I'd say we definitely go with traffic. But I thought if we started, that's why I made it number one, is because if we did the thinking and the work on that, all of that would play into what Jerry does, you know, with the signage and everything he's doing there. And also, if we move, if we move forward on two of the other requests, which were accessibility for the NASH and pandemonium, accessibility and signage. So, that's why I thought this was really important. But I would just give it to planning as well, and have them focus in the area so that then we can leverage their planning and, and this couple of projects.
Yeah, I have that as actually number two. My thought was that, I thought it was all great stuff, but I'd like to see, sometimes those studies take a long period of time, years, and I'd like to see a little more something happening now. You know, so I think if we can fund the downtown study as well as fund these other things, then maybe as they're developing the downtown study, they're already planning, using Jerry's stuff, doing the public art or something. So, I had that as number two, so very, very important as well. Where did that fall on your table, Duane?
I had it as number three. $100,000.
So, I had 81 for, only because when I deducted everything. But the $50,000, I add up to 50 for Jerry's, you know, if I'm 35. So, that would pretty close to $100,000 as well. Do you wanna do 100?
100? You go with 100?
I'd like to think you squeeze it off and get those three things out there. I just think it's important that they focus on those areas.
Well, you know, we already had a traffic study done, but the DOT, to get a more.
This is parking. Should I, what?
You said traffic.
I meant parking. Sorry. I should have titled it.
So, the arts, did we vote on the arts or no? Because arts was second for me and second for you.
I had two, I had tied one. I have 25 for the art. And then I have 35 for Jerry.
So, we're good with 35 for Jerry and we're good with the $100,000, correct?
Yes. I did not have, I picked only five. You were only one to five. And I did not have the public art listed as one to five. It's tough looking at all this. But a couple of folks had said that the similar, not similar because obviously Brett's a professional and in charge of this in the state, et cetera, et cetera, but that the Merchants Association had done this, or something like this once before. And so, if we were short of funds, it didn't make my top five because I thought that might be something EDC or might organize with the merchants. So, that did not make my list for the top five.
You were told that merchants did something with public art?
Yes. I personally did not see it, but yes, I'm here to tell that.
What I did is, like I said, for the past two and a half years, I've been saying, I wanna feed everybody. So, I chopped down, you had, you had $20,000, right? You had $20,000 for the NASH, you had $20,000 for pandemonium. I went 15 to 15. So, that freed me up $10,000 to play with. I still believe, wholeheartedly, the police cruiser should come out of Capitol.
If anyone's watching, opening my calculator. I don't want people to think I'm ordering pizzas. All right, we got $100,000. We're adding 35. So, I think we only have two of six suspended. Did you see my numbers?
Yep.
Mine came, my numbers and Catherine's numbers both came out of the tour sets.
I don't think, no, the NASH put in four. So, what, I guess that takes us three and four. The NASH and pandemonium, I gave them 20 each. The NASH said it was between 20 and 25 to do a ramp. Now, I don't know, you know, to your point, that's a solid and creative approach. To make it 15, then add, maybe the funding is for the other, however it works out. What I liked, if we did that, whatever the amount is for the NASH and pandemonium, I think they should be fairly equal. And I'd love to see them focusing on accessibility by pandemonium and or signage.
That's what I like, equal, we're all 15 for each.
I was on 25 for each, but then I did 25 for Brett, so, and I added up to. Then I did a couple that I didn't put any money in.
Did you recover the one or two? Oh, and the last. I did put in, which, and my calculation was a balance. It would be a balance if we readjust these. Look, the balance, put it towards the police vehicle. I do hear your point, Duane, about bringing that up, but I do. And then some of the things we've been talking about, the needs for changing facility, et cetera, et cetera. With, when we mark the police cars. I don't know what it'll cost to redo that bathroom. I don't, I don't know. I have not looked at it. It's a $5,000 project or whatever. But I'd like to, you know, say a little something towards that.
And I had 13, nine.
You did?
Leftover. We might chart there at 13, nine leftovers.
Can you add 100 in there?
Yes.
So, can we give something to public art, which was one of my top ones?
Yeah, I had 25 for them.
You did 25? You're open to doing some public art?
Okay.
So, then we're up to 160. And then we all wanna give to the NASH and to pandemonium a little something, right?
How much you put in for the art?
I did 25 for art.
So, it's between 15 and 20 for each for pandemonium, and we said 25 each.
Well, that was only my number, but I just, if we're all in agreement to give them something, then let's just figure out the number. You had 20 hours, and you had 15. And then we could do 17, five.
So, we're down 15.
195, I think. 195, so it gives us a little less than 10,000 left. Or you wanna go to 15, and then give more to the, they're all putting in the police line? And then the fire department, or in the registrar?
I think we should keep it at 17, five because it's, that doesn't do something. It could be on twice the cost of somewhere.
Okay. Okay, so the NASH. Yeah?
Yeah, again, in light of the worthiness of the other projects, I couldn't do less of what I suggested. Mine wasn't mandatory, not a, I had to do, you know, we could get together and cut that down. I mean, I'm not, this was just something I was offering the town. But if there are other things you think are just as worthy or more, I can absolutely still do a lot of bang for the buck by focusing on some of the certain things. We just wanna talk that over with you guys, so.
Okay. Well, thank you. And so maybe while tonight, we agree on the items, and then if we have to.
Shuffle the money.
Shuffle all the money or something, but.
This brings us to 195.
Yeah.
So, we don't have a little.
But all the projects are great, Jerry. That is the problem. We don't have enough money. Yes, 195. There's a balance of 11, four.
We all have the police on our list. That was all that.
What do you think? What else did you have?
I had some money for the registrars, not knowing what's gonna happen to that.
Yeah. Yeah, early voting this year, and it's a state mandated thing with, you know, funding. So, that might be something we have to.
Do we have to pay for it today or we'll pay for it at a, like, normal, so.
All right, so that gives us 11.
We just wanna put the remaining 11, four, 11, five, whatever it is, just put it in a placeholder for a police department for right now, but not vote on it. You know, hold off on it to vote.
Okay. All right, so can I hear a motion for $35,000 for the Heritage Corridor, Tourism Corridor project? 17, five for handicap ramp towards the NASH. $100,000 for the downtown Deep River Master Plan to the PNC.
With a focus on accessibility, parking, and signage.
Okay. $25,000 for public art. $17,000 for animal center pathways, museum signage. Remaining to be put towards the police vehicle or locker room upgrades, if that is needed. Did you need a second?
I said a motion.
I want some favor?
Hi. What should we make? 11?
11, four.
Okay, that's great. So, our next item on the agenda, a special town meeting is needed. So, we need to vote on three items. We will present this to the Board of Finance, and then we'll need to vote on this at the town meeting to extend sure of the ARPA funds. Animal Control Officer Town Interlocal Agreement. This agreement was agreed on by Chester, Essex Deep River. We have a wonderful animal control officer, Caroline Fountain, who's doing amazing work, especially with the seizure of animals we've just had. She's working around the clock pretty much for this case. Well, it turns out the contract that was signed was never officially authorized by our legislative body, which is a town meeting. So, we have to go before the town just to finalize it. And I hope it doesn't get voted down by any means because it's a wonderful thing. Have a full-time person that's very qualified. We've always had part-time people, all the free times, and then it just doesn't work out. People don't wanna just have part-time jobs. You know, they're always looking for free time. So, it's been working out great, so that has to be on the agenda. And then, of course, the expenditures, oh, and the expenditure of $21,000 for the accounting software for the annual fee. We voted to spend it, spend 85 out of the ARPA funds, out of town meeting in the past. But now we have to do the $21,000 just to get approval because it wasn't in the budget. It's something we can afford and we need because we have the other components, so.
And that'll come out of the general fund.
And that'll come out of the general fund, right.
Can we add something to that special meeting? Because by the time we have a special meeting, we're probably gonna want to appoint someone for planning this on, correct? And he has to, or she has to go to planning, to special meeting, correct? So, can we add that, or we can add that to here, for the town meeting?
Well, I think our next Board of Selectmen meeting, we present the person, or we have a special meeting to present whoever we want. And then, you know, as long as we legally notice this.
Are we gonna have this, are we gonna have this special family meeting before our next meeting or after?
Oh, no. I was thinking like March 12-ish or something. No. Because we have, we have to do the legal notice and everything, and we have to talk to the Board of Finance.
We only have one candidate.
So, for right now, only one candidate.
I can show you that for going to town meeting.
Yeah, no, good.
Instead of having another town meeting to appoint a person.
Okay, well, that's all we have on the agenda. Anything else? Because our second audience is citizens, and then we will adjourn. If any audiences have a comment, again, we're gonna treat it the same.
If I could just re-visit the question, because it was a question I asked, and I don't know if you can offer an answer to that, but what can we do about clawing back that referendum that was approved on the fields to apply that to the concrete needs that the school system has? Because the taxpayers can't take that.
Well, we're breaking our rules when talking. We really can't do much about that. They have not gone out to bond yet, but they can't reallocate the bond because it was voted on at town meeting with the fields. So, many, many people, many taxpayers, many elected officials, all of these meetings, we've said, please, put the fields on hold. The public does not always spend the money. But it really is up to Region Four whether they listen.
Can we petition the Region Four to revisit that? I mean, is, shouldn't there be a process that the taxpayers can take when we were, when they didn't properly advise us of the situation they were in when they pushed this referendum forward?
Well, it is a tricky question. You know, they're saying there's really no proof that it's been an ongoing issue, but it does seem like it's been an ongoing issue.
But you were there. It was, it was finishing.
I was there, and I was not too happy.
I know.
And I'm on record being not too happy. And Duane?
No, I mean, we've all said that, correct? You know, we can go back three or four meetings that Carol and I attended, and the first thing I said is, can we hold off on the fields? We'll just stop, take a breather. And again, it has not gone up the bond, but the referendum was passed. And I reiterated that, and I thought, when I talked to Brian last week after meeting, I said, can we just hold off on the fields, please? I said, because $10 million bond for that, $58 million bond for the mold. You know, and there's more bonding things coming down the pike at us. And again, it's, we have to take a breather. And I voiced my opinion loud and clear with Brian. Is it gonna help? I don't know. I've heard some different stories of what they're trying to do. They aren't gonna do any work at John Winter right now on the fields. They're gonna hold off on that. But they're moving forward some plans for. And if they can get turf fields, then it'll eliminate half of the developed missile property. Missile property is going to cost a lot of money. It's all ledge up there. It'll cost a lot of money to develop that.
And it's an excessive loan. We have to go over a wet one. We have to get wet one from them. But we're on this town.
Trust me, Fred, we, as a team up here, have voice, our opinions loud and clear. It's disheartening. If you're at the meeting, you heard me speak. You know, I'm not happy, but we have to do what's best for our children and get the, you know, hey, do I want to waste $5.8 million? Absolutely not. And I've been very adamant from day one on that also. We're paying almost $2 million in consulting fees and our project's a $3.8 million. We aren't reinventing the wheel. We're taking insulation off the pipes, we're putting it by your, your tradesman. You know, it's not that part of the project. But, so we've all been very outspoken and as well as several of board members up there. The board was even divided up there also.
Any other, well, thank you for comments. Any other audience of citizens?
I just, I'll just reinforce that we all have our circles of friends and it's a lot of talk about, you know, that we get $9 million, the fields ran down our throats and now our kids are in the safety issues and it's coming back to the same well. And I know that you've explained why where we're at, but just, I'm sure you know that within the town, there's a lot of talk about why are you, why are you doing this?
Well, then I think you have to get everyone out to vote no. And I'm on record saying no, sorry. Sorry, Region 4.
Vote no on the repair.
Well, I think we can do it cheaper. You know, you get some people trained and volunteers so you get in there and do it.
Being the trades, I don't think that getting volunteers in is a very smart idea or a very good idea.
Well, I need volunteers to do the things like taking down ceiling tiles in the part of the school that's not.
They're going to expose mold and the like and that's.
But if we're trained and we can help out some way, it's just, as Brian said, the $5.8 million project, about $2 million is consulting fees.
You saw the individual shit at that head day. It was a lot of money, a lot of headcount.
I don't discount that.
The real question, which I think you answered, is you can't, we can't trade away some of the field money. Can't trade away some of the $9 million?
No, they have, they, yeah. Bob's got a question online here. Go ahead, Bob. Also muted. I think you're still muted, Bob. Okay, there you go.
Okay, there you go. Hi, everyone. This is Bob Gander from Kirkland Street. I just wanted to first say thank you to the board of selectmen for doing the Zoom link and your calls. It's much appreciated. I have an elderly parent that I try to avoid the public as much as I can so I don't compromise my mom at all. So thank you very much for doing the Zoom calls. I know there's a little trouble last week, but as you see tonight, it worked out pretty well.
And this is going to be, this is the permanent link now. So it's going to be posted on the website. It's always going to be the same link.
Okay, perfect. So thank you very much for that. It's much appreciated. I noticed that you listened on the Zoom call, you're doing a special meeting now, so I would like to encourage that you do links for those special meetings too during the day.
Okay.
So, but I do appreciate you doing it for these regular meetings.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing that I wanted to mention was, thank you for appointing Catherine to the Estuary Transit Board. I know that last month, Dwayne had indicated that he really was wholly in favor of that if Angus was definitely on to be only short term. And there was, when you guys were having that discussion, there was really no firm end for him. And so I'm glad that you decided to just go ahead and appoint Catherine. I know she will do a great job. She's very detail-oriented. She always takes good notes. She follows through and she's extremely organized. So I think you'll be very happy with your appointment. So I just wanted to thank you for that as well. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Anyone else in the audience? Has a comment? Okay. Well, thank you to the volunteers that are here and thank you for stepping up. We need people. Can I have a motion to adjourn? So what's the, that's it? Oh. Okay. 7:25.
Hearing, hearing, I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance, regular February 2024, meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance. First item on our agenda, we have two sets of minutes which to approve. We can do them on a different time. We can do them separately. And I offer to members of the board, how do you wish to proceed? Approve the minutes?
I made a motion to approve the minutes.
I have, Jack T. Calamari has made a motion to approve the minutes. May I have a second? Okay, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Says opposed. All right, excellent. I've been told that I have to ask for opposing by the town clerk. All right.
Can I ask you a quick question? No, no.
You certainly can.
Is, I noticed they were posting before they were approved.
Excellent. Your question then raised that question to me, which I, I'll give full credit to the town clerk. I bet you it's been told to me before. They should, they should be identified as direct. There is state law that says they have to be in within a certain period of time after the meeting. There is then assumed that we have citizens who recognize that the state law says they have to be in, but not until they are officially approved by us are they officially approved. If we disagree with a minute, we will correct it in the following minute. But it is, you asked an excellent question. Why do we have minutes up there that we, the board, have not agreed that are reflective of what we said? But you're not always in control of our own destinies. Right. We have approved minutes. Audience of citizens. All right. Hearing none. I will identify one of our citizens who is again on date night. Fire Chief Lee has invited us for a tour of the fire department, which he has given to prior boards of finance and it is interesting, right? So I've offered, is this board interested in such? And I do highly recommend it as we move into budget. Are you interested? And when is available, a convenient time? We are going into budget workshop season, so I don't know how much of your time is available, but does anyone, I'll start off with, what about a Saturday morning in March? Arbitrarily, March night, would a majority of the board of finance be available that morning?
Yes. Yes.
Don't get it on? Okay.
If it's on the early.
All right. Now, Tim, after I did that, are you available? Thank you. All right. So you will see, members of the board of finance at nine o'clock on Saturday, March 9.
Yeah.
All right. And selectmen, you also are invited to join us. Excellent. Thank you. All right. And Tom is not with us, but he has sent his report. And January was the second month for property tax collection, which is why we saw such a large increase in January. And from the bottom of Tom's report, let's see, January, we ended with 9, 9,700, although what frustrates me is it's all the thing, but certainly the driver of that is property taxes. In February, we had 11. Well, actually, February 20th, we had 13. And February 27, seven days later, we spent at least over.
Prior.
Not prior.
27, 2023.
23, okay, a year ago. Thank you for, I made that statement last year. Okay. So February 24, we have 13. Money, is that, I assume it's served mostly by property taxes, correct? So people are still paying in February. They get it, they, all good. And Tom is not here, but there has been citizens who are concerned about those who have skills, hacking skills, I think is the technical term. I bet you it's another term, but that's the way I, and citizens have suggested that maybe we should be taking account numbers off of the shoot, not making it any easier for those who do hacking. So we will, I will bring that up to Tom.
But can I just add on that, when I'm working in the files and there are employees who are participating in pension funds, social security numbers are on paper in there, on several sheets of paper. I stumbled across them. I just don't know. I want to bring it up now, you mentioned hacking or security. I don't know. You need to go through and remove those or do something along those lines. I just mentioned.
That makes a lot of sense. Tell me where, tell me where those files that you should have called up? Are they clandestine files that should be locked away or?
I could find the actual files. I can't remember top of my mind which ones they were. It was all connected when I was looking it up. I was looking at minutes pertaining to the WPCA and I had, an extra folder came in and there it was, the pension stuff and that, couple sheets beneath.
No, that's.
I don't know if it was misfounded or what it was, but there it was. I could find it if I got back in the vault.
That's an excellent point. Yes. We shall bring that up. All right. The next item on our agenda, you keep your own book there.
Hey, Bud, you know that Triton is here to present?
Oh, you had mentioned that. No, I did not. Well, we do now.
Just in case you get too far in the weeds. They've been waiting.
Well, we have just gone through Tom.
Bud, I have two things to add that Tom asked me to add on what we've been doing. It will be brief. Would you like me to add? Now, what we're talking about.
Since I don't know what they are? Sure.
We, I'll just pass this around. It's the bonds we have outstanding. And it's sewer bond and a capital, including the catcalled purchase bond. This is, this is what Tom has had, but now it's in, it's in the form.
This is a complete.
There's one bond missing. One bond missing. As he's heading to the airport, he told me there's a bond missing, but I'm sure, this is, I guess I would say, in the works of Tom.
Yes.
And now it's.
Yes. And the other one is for the entire bond was 280 years ago. It's an infirmity.
It's just facts. And then the other piece is, you've been asking at what these accounts were for the small cities. And Tom and I dug through some files and the bottom chunk on this, on the town deposit you had, your small cities loan program with 37,000 in it and the other three accounts. The small cities accounts, the one at Essex Savings, the top one on page three, you know, that that's been inactive for seven years. And with the files, we actually found a letter on when this program started and one of the people CC'd on it, is the loan officer. There had been an active program in years past of giving loans. Tom attended this and a couple of the loans that were unsuccessful, but they're in the ancient mist of time at this point. It's nothing that can be activated. So when we spoke to the loan, actually, I spoke to the loan officer and then we have a text that she sent confirming all of this. She said, there's no reason that we need to keep that fund in a nonprofit account or even need to keep it at all. That's the 36,996 at Essex Savings. And then the other three accounts are all connected with the town incubator properties and rents that are coming in. And Tom sensed with this was that we might consolidate them and we wanted to do a special check to make sure that it's fine with Anne Marie, fine with our town attorney, that they be consolidated, if there's any reason that they should have to be separate. And the last one here, which just says the 25,540, that's an account, some of the accounts have leases, requirements of a dollar a year, and that's been going into that account. So it seems that these, to the best of our knowledge, again, to be checked with Anne Marie, the town attorney, these three accounts could be consolidated, made into interest-bearing accounts as long as the backend financing of one of the payments are mainly kept somewhere.
And their history is, the three accounts, because there was three different grants?
I don't know if that's what they started, you know, or one was, they're different, they're different buildings. One was incubator 500 building. The next one down, Liberty Account, was the 600, which is the one that we own, the town owns. And the last one appeared to be where these minor payments were being made.
And their history is, the three accounts, because there was three different grants?
I don't know if that's what they started, you know, or one was, they're different, they're different buildings. One was incubator 500 building. The next one down, Liberty Account, was the 600, which is the one that we own, the town owns. And the last one appeared to be where these minor payments were being made. So that's as, that's as far as we got, but wanted to share that with the group. And I guess now it goes to.
So are you making a, does the selectmen make a recommendation to the board of finance and the board of finance will agree that we consolidate them all?
I'm just sharing Tom's, this is the work we've done to date on this.
Okay.
I've not moved in the select, I'm speaking on Tom's behalf today.
So we will.
So see, another month to go by without you guys knowing where this is.
Okay. So this is an update and there will be future discussions on this.
Thank you.
That's good. All right. That's a good update. Carol, you want to take over recommendations, selectmen, any actions on those recommendations?
Do you want to give the floor to Triton?
You do. You can, that is your time.
Oh, okay. All right. And I'm introducing Rob Viviani. He's the new director at Triton Youth Services.
You can just stay here. The best place to be is. I just get a bit of a break here today, huh? So, good evening. As Carol said, my name is Rob Viviani and the very new director of Triton Services. And before you ask, if I'm related to any Vivianis, you know I am. I've never met one that I'm not familiar with. And so I did not know we were going to be presenting to the board of finance this evening. I thought we were going to be in front of the board of selectmen. I had three copies of our proposed budget. I do have an unstapled copy. There's a copy machine available on Sunday. It's left aside on the line, but I'll hand out these current three. So as you will see, there are requests for an increase in our house. It's easy in some ways to let you read it because it's very well condensed on the first page of this handout about why we're looking for an increase at this time and what that increase will get you. One of the things it really boils down to is that Triton was the beneficiary of having a 10-year drug-free communities grant from SAMSA, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, federal administration part of the CDC, I believe. So that was a 10-year grant, every year $125,000, which really went a long way towards paying for some salaries and some, some programs. And that grant actually was due to run out in 2021. It got extended during COVID, but it did expire at the end of fiscal year 23. So in order to continue to maintain the programs that we put in place, that's really the heart of it is because of the loss of those funds, also some declining ARPA funds. I had asked our bookkeeper to get me solid numbers on the ARPA. She was, been sick for like a week, week and a half. I did some math and projected that because most of that ARPA money is going towards salaries for clinical services, the counseling that we provide. And as it continues out till the end of June, I, at the current rate, there would be about 13,000 left on June 30th if we don't find another particular way, place to spend that. And that's 13,000 between all the funds we got from the three towns. One of the things you'll see on this document when you get it is I've done a comparison of what surrounding towns are contributing to their youth service bureaus versus what Triton, in terms of the three towns have been contributing. And really, we've been, we've been at the lowest end. I've compared us to Sabre, which, don't even pay attention, they're an outlier. Everybody knows they're one of the best, if not the best funded youth service bureau in the state. They are a municipal agency and so that accounts for some of that. But I also compared us to Westbrook and Old Lime. And when you do get that, you'll see that where we stood in terms of last year's requests were quite a bit lower than those other two towns. And with the current request, we're just a little bit above what Old Lime funds and we're still about $5 per resident lower, per resident, lower than Westbrook. So an initial, an additional part of that request is to bring us in line with the norm of what towns are providing their youth service bureaus.
Anyone have any questions?
I know it's a little hard to come to questions if you're first seeing it. I am.
How is your, how is your budget determined? Do I, do you have a board or?
Yes, we actually have three members of my board here this evening. We're happy to speak if needed, but also just to support us. So yeah, we're, we're very much in budget season, just like yourself. So we get, if you looked on the, what I guess would be page two, it's showing an expense budget. Unfortunately, it doesn't show it. I can, I can have to use the, the chat or email the folks. Two different other sources of income that we do get. So we get granting from DCF, Department of Children's Families, state grant, then from the municipalities, and then any other funding comes from private grants and foundations and fundraising that we do. So one of the things we've had to rely on a lot in the past is grants and fundraising to fund essential services. And so if you look through the, through the document, we see that what we're asking to do is just fund our two full-time positions as well as the expenses related to, and two part-time people, bookkeeper and admin, as well as the expenses associated with running an office, a physical space. And we feel that having the towns, the three towns, provide that funding makes us operationally secure from year to year. We end up losing quite a few staff. It's been inordinate. This year we've lost four people, actually six people, four physicians, two people, built physicians have also since left. So this was a little bit of an inordinate year, but YSBs in general tend to have a fair amount of turnover in those positions that are grant funded. Because those grants are not steady from year to year. Some might be a three or four-year grant, but that's gone and people move on and they want to find more secure employment workplaces where they know their funding is going to be secured. So we're looking to secure the two full-time positions, which would be the director, myself, as well as our prevention and positive youth development person. And those are the crux of our program, is through positive youth development and prevention. I do have some data that I can provide to show how those programs are impacting our population. I can't give you individual level data, but I can give you population level data for the three towns. We survey our, our youth every other year. We do a student assessment survey and every other year it's been done since at least 2015 and may even go back further than that. And ask them all sorts of questions about the positives and negatives in their lives and we, so we can track how they're doing with relation to how they feel about their school, how they feel about in the community, how, what level of involvement they may or may not have with drugs and alcohol and things like that. So we've got really solid data to show that over the last, since 2017, and in particular from 2019 to 2023, some real reductions in the amount of use of all substances. The state has put a real emphasis on vaping and we've seen some good drop in the vaping number, but it's actually across the board with alcohol, marijuana and other drugs as well. And I'm happy to share that data. Again, I know you're seeing this for the first time and I'm more than happy to answer questions now or to come back all the time. I know you're in budget workshops and happy to answer questions.
So you say it's per capita. Is that full population or just the student population?
No, full population, the town. The full town population.
So Rob, so you're asking for double what we've paid out of other years? And is that because you lost the grant? Is that really where we're getting hit the most?
Yeah, the grants, you know, 125,000 dollars is a, is a nice enough, was, was able to put us in good stead for what would have been 10 years and ended up being a, a good 12 years. So that's, that's the biggest change. I mean, obviously, if you look at the percentage changes, they're pretty staggering. They're, you know, they're eye popping. I think when you look at the, the dollar numbers, they're not quite as significant. And if you consider for Deep River, we're looking at a total request of 60,289. We get an in-kind donation of what has to date, the 20,000 for the building that we occupy, part of what we're around 56 High Street. So your dollar amount, or at least the out, cash outlay would be 40,289 or around that if you decide to change that number. This has been suggested, but I hope it's not.
What would be billed to us would only be 40,000.
Yes. If it stays at 20,000, then it would be 40,289, yes.
Do you think you're going to have an impact with, so the supervision district has passed their budget. They have two school psychologists in there, I believe. Do you think you're going to be impacted with people seeking counseling at your establishment? Since now the schools are going to have in-house counselors?
Well, I'll make two comments. Typically psychologists in my history, and I've been in youth development for over 30 years and worked in juvenile probation, had relationships with the schools very intensely, also been on the school board of Chester and briefly for the region four, so I know a bit about psychologists. By and large, when they're in school systems, don't do counseling or they do very little counseling. They're mostly there for testing, doing testing of students. I hope they're going to be doing some counseling because quite honestly, what's happened is, and relieving some of that burden because of those people who have left, majority of them have been clinical staff. We currently have no clinical staff, on staff. So we don't have any capacity currently to provide counseling services directly at our place, knowing we are collecting information from all the surrounding providers. I have a volunteer who's studying to become advanced practice nurse and she's not a young woman in school. She's, you know, been out in the field for a long time and she's collecting a lot of the information about what the area providers have in terms of capacity, insurances that they accept or don't accept, and what their waitlist may or may not be like. So that if people do come to us, we can say, here's three or four people you can call who you know have, take your insurance and may have availability within two months or by something like that. So it would be a curated list rather than giving someone a list that they just have to start now picking and choosing out. In terms of where we go forward, whether we're going to start to redevelop a clinical program in-house, I think part of that remains to be seen. Some of that's depending on where the funding comes, not only from the towns, but some of the grants that we've applied for. In the past, most of the clinical programming has been paid for with grant funding, not so much with the municipal funding. And as you're seeing this, the, there's no clinical staff listed in that essential expenses. So this is really just to continue to provide really three basic functions that we serve. Positive youth development, which are those programs. We have peer leadership programs, both Val and John Winter. And then we have prevention programs, so four wellness is a 15-week kind of life skills and prevention program at all three elementary schools. Then we have some other groups at the elementary schools that's for identified students, the social workers identify students who could use some additional social skills and so forth. And so they meet in a lunch bunch, a person goes in and does that. So that's one aspect. We have positive youth development, prevention, and then the third component is youth diversion from criminal justice. And that's something almost all YSBs do is they push on the state to keep kids out of the juvenile court. Fortunately, that's been kind of not only low referrals to us, but low referrals to the state. They've been decreasing, but that's something we want to continue to focus on, try and keep kids out of the court system because the research shows over and over again that the more kids go into court, the more likely they are to get enmeshed in the system and stay in the system. They're better served in the community. So that's our kind of three-pronged focus at the moment. If the towns are able and willing to fund that for us, then we can look at what other additional grant fundings we might get to kind of expand back out, whether it be into clinical or into some intensive case management for those families with complex needs and things of that nature, or even early childhood stuff, which are things that Triton has done. Triton has, over the years, has a whole different palette of services and any youth service bureau tends to have that. And right now, we're, we're focusing on these three that we've had in place for a long time and do really well and want to continue to be able to do them well.
Now, part of our contribution is in time, the building, correct?
Yes.
Is that reflected in your budget and these numbers?
It's, it's reflected in the expense, right? It's shown in there as 20,000. Actually, you get that benefit. So even though it shows 40, 60,289 to Deep River, you'll be credited with 20,000 dollars for the building.
So the total cost of Deep River is 40,289 dollars, right?
But let's not forget that the cost of the heat and the electricity and the maintenance and everything else is part of that transfer cost.
So if we were to look at current market rates, that would just go into your budget increase or budget limit?
Well, certainly we try. We're at kind of, if you increase the rate, we're going to have to get the money for some. We certainly think that, well, we do need to have physical space and we think it's incumbent upon the towns, the three towns together, to provide that physical space.
Oh, I did ask you a question. I know you emailed me back a few things. What, so what is the Centerbrook Satellite Office?
So that was established during COVID. So that's, we, we have, actually I didn't mention, so one of the other things, because it does kind of fall under youth diversion and that's where the funding comes from, DCF. You folks currently aren't funding this, but we have a dedicated case manager to handle truancy and school avoidance kids that get referred to us from the school. And so at our office, there wasn't enough space when there was more staff on hand and clinical, a lot of clinical, well, more clinical staff. There wasn't a private meeting space for that case manager. And so that office in Spencer's Corner was secured for the person to meet there. This actually worked out really well because there's been a fair number of people from Essex and it gives me a little sure there was actually, we've had a couple of clients right in the apartments upstairs, so they have to come down. So it's, you know, that may be one of the things that we would maybe look to throw them out of the budget, but at 3,600 dollars, it's actually a really good, really good deal, 300 dollars a month. If you saw the office space, you'd say, yeah, that's a good deal.
For the finance thoughts, I assume we'll deal with this in more detail during our budget preparation.
Who actually does hands-on work with the kids? Who addresses all your programs?
So we have a.
Because you have a really limited staff up here.
Right. So we have a director of positive youth development, which is who does most of the in-person program in her. Due to a number of staff leaving, she's actually, that's probably what she's been doing is a job and a half. She does have a support person part-time, who's more of a behind the scenes, maintaining the website and newsletters that go out, as well as researching different additional kinds of resources that can be used within the program. But we have one person who goes into Valley, John Winter, and through elementary schools on various days for, for different things. And then also after school at our, at our location, there are some other programs when I'm here. So yeah, we are running on a, on a very kind of skeleton crew right now, as I mentioned in that four people, six people leave from four different positions in the span of 10 to 11 months. So it is actually a situation that's affecting YSBs throughout the state and even human service agencies in general. People are leaving the field for more financially lucrative, that's the word I was looking for, I think, more lucrative positions and also YSBs who, the ones that are nonprofit like ours are very dependent on grants. Again, as I mentioned, grants are not very stable over time. And so the whole field is finding a real problem in securing and retaining staff. You'll see one of the things in there is to provide some benefits, very modest benefits, health benefits for the two full-time employees. We have never provided benefits before to any employees. It just hasn't been possible. It's, it depends on the nonprofit you go to. Some do, a lot, a lot aren't able to because of these funding concerns, but we really feel it's important to be able to retain staff, to be able to offer them. Our salaries aren't great to begin with. Really what we have to offer them is vacation time. We'd like to be able to provide something a little bit more that will help us maintain staff for more than 18 months, two years, that sort of thing.
So there's no dollars in here for those four people that have left in the last 10 months? Were those all grant-funded positions?
Not all.
So do you have no intentions of rehiring anybody?
So we have, so not reflected in here is a part-time person who puts in 15 to 20 hours. That's that support person paid through grant funding. That dedicated case manager to the truancy students, I read, that's also grant-funded and can continue to be, those grants are in place. Most of that grant, a good chunk of that comes from the state and that's pretty stable. And she's working 10 to 12 hours a week. So yeah, we will continue to have part-time people that will fund through grants. That's part-time person that's on there may be moving into more hours, but it remains to be seen. We will, we will hire additional people based on what kind of funding we get and what kind of grants you have. So right now, we're kind of in a hold, in wait. We want to be able to secure the things that we are currently providing and as I said, have done for years and do well and know that we're securing that from our three towns before we start thinking about any kind of further, further work, which we will then go and look for grant funding for that. Well, we can only hit you so hard at once, you know?
So Rob, how does this work since you present to Essex and Chester? You know, we say yes, Chester says no. Do you sharpen your pencil and you re-divide it by three? I mean.
Well, that's a good question, Carol. I mean, I'm, this is my first go around. I think yours is abused from this position.
Yeah.
So yeah, I have the unenviable position of trying to herd the cats of Chester, Deep River and Essex. And it's, you know, you're actually, I've peered in front of the Chester Board of Selectmen of Finance, the Essex Board of Selectmen, not finance. So it's, each town does it a little differently and they all want to ask, well, what, what does the other town say? So when I was in Essex last week, I will say the Board of Select, all three of the Board of Selectmen seemed supportive of this. I don't want to put words in their mouth, but the way they seem to present themselves in my read of this, because what the first selectman said was, yeah, no, okay, you know, looks okay, I think, you know, contingent on the other two towns also coming through.
They texted, like, what's Deep River going to do about it?
Is there anything through our relationship with, that Norm could do to help us get more grant money or anything he can do with his inside knowledge and power?
That remains to be seen. So youth service associations, youth bureaus have a central organization, Connecticut Youth Services Association, who does allow being an act of state. And they are, every year they're going up there and asking for more money. Last year they asked for 60,000 and that would have been statewide and did get it. I don't know quite what they're looking for this year, Norm may or may not be. I will say, I want to just be frank, it's hard to run an organization when they're always dependent on grants. In fact, so there's an organization in, I think they're on a rock hill called the Child Health and Development Institute. They're kind of a quasi-governmental agency. They're really a private agency, but they're well-connected with Department of Social Services, Department of Children and Families, Department of Education. They also work with Yale. And one of their mandates, if you want to call it, is to do research as well as a couple of other research, to find out what are best practices systemically for the whole state of Connecticut around behavioral health in particular, to make sure that every child in Connecticut has good access to quality behavioral health. One of the things they put out in November of last year was a paper on workforce study and about the workforce challenges, some of what I just talked about and their recommendations for how to, and I can share that with folks. There is an executive summary, so that's about two pages. The, the report itself is about 21 pages. So they outline what the problem is in terms of workforce retention in behavioral health and human services and then give a list of different recommendations for doing that. I don't have them off the. I don't have them off the top of my head, but it's really more of a systemic issue. And, but one of the things their president, CEO, said in an op-ed that he wrote, is that these agencies shouldn't be depending on golf tournaments and winter galas to meet their needs from year to year. So I'll kind of use his words to say, sure, we can go look for more grants, but it's a hard way to run your organization from year to year. And that's why this year, we're looking for this increase to make us operationally secure from year to year for the very basic essentials that we do. Another thought that just breezed through my head and maybe it'll come back to me.
You sent me that long note.
What's that?
You did send me that long note, but I like that a lot. Bored you too.
So do you touch the, sort of, like, the lives of every child by going into the school? Or do you have an exact population of them?
Well, right now, we touch the lives of every sixth grader, in three or three towns through our four-wellness fifteen-week program that touches on. I would liken it to, sort of, if you have kids in the high school at all, they go through health, a health program, that's kind of what it's like, this fifteen-week program. I pull some of that, but also some of it's around social emotional regulation, relationships and things like that. Also, our first entry into prevention towards substances, vaping and marijuana and alcohol and those kinds of things. So we do touch the lives of every child here, at least in the sixth grade. Some of the other programming is, as I mentioned, is identified by the social worker for particular kids who might need extra attention. And then there are programs that are open to all kids, and they can decide whether to join or not.
A girl circle.
I was wondering if anybody from our board, if you'd really to add something that I didn't say?
I'm Mary Boone, I'm the co-chair along with Jan Pagan. And I think, one of the things that was said tonight earlier during the first select meeting was, we have to do what's best for our children. I think that was you that said that. And we're doing, doing a lot, the three towns are doing a lot with all that they're investing in fields, buildings, all these things. All this has had a big impact on the kids. And so the levels of anxiety, stress with kids, teachers, it's being reflected in what's going on in the schools. There's also suicide prevention that we do as well. And so I just urge you to think about not just the infrastructure that surrounds them, but what's in here and what COVID has done to them, what COVID's done to their teachers, what the disruption has done to be, have middle school kids at high school. I think it's really important, the programs that we do, we get tremendous feedback from both the kids and the people at the schools. I know Jan, I think, has a quote from Mike Barrell, I do. But first, I want to just share this because I think everybody knows that it's a time of crisis in mental health issues, you know? This has been announced again and again and again, but here are some statistics. Survey data released this year by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention show that nearly sixty percent of teen girls had experienced persistent hopelessness, nearly one-third of girls had recently considered suicide. About three in ten students had experienced poor mental health in the last thirty days, and twenty-two percent had contemplated suicide within the last year. One in ten had attempted it. You know, so we live in a lovely community, but we have to take care of it, and we have to worry about this. And we have to, you know, that's what Tri-Town does. It tries to help them before they even need counseling, and then if they need counseling, refer them and so forth. But this, I thought, was nice. Findings like these reflect the concerning trends we've written as to in our clinics, practices, and hospitals across the country. But while the numbers are undoubtedly alarming, we cannot deem them insurmountable or irreversible. They must galvanize us to act. And so that's what we do with Tri-Town. We act, you know, we have the girls' circle, and we bring them in, and we have the kids who got in trouble. One of the stories that I really liked was about some kids who busted up some picnic tables at your park there, Platte Park. And a volunteer from Tri-Town worked with them, and this was instead of going to juvenile court, worked with them and taught them how to build picnic tables. And when they were done, they asked to build a table for little kids. You know, think of the difference that made to those kids instead of being sent, you know, told how terrible they are. And, you know, so that's what we're doing. And what we need is the stability so that they can seek grants instead of seek their salary for next year. So that's what we're asking for.
I will say, the numbers that Jan just quoted, we mirror those very much. And if I do get a chance to come back, I can provide you not only some more specific Deep River level data about just the number of kids we've touched. Well, should we say that's a bad way of saying that? Whose lives we've contacted, as well as some area level, as I said, we survey our kids every other year, and so we get real good data on the substance use piece, but also more recently, the mental health. And the substance use data looks really good, and the mental health data, really a mixed bag and very much mirrors what you just brought up to us. So very happy to come back and answer more questions. Carol has an email if you want to reach out to me by email.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
So much for your comments.
Really appreciate it.
May I, for sure? Well, certainly see that in the numbers you gave us. Let's say, well, certainly stands out. The Tri-Town is three towns, so even a lot. It's always a humbling presentation when they come in. What, Carol, is still you?
Oh, okay. So the Board of Selectmen have been talking about several things and just wanted to make you aware of a few of them. So we did vote tonight to expand some more ARPA money, and that will use up the rest of our money, which our calculation showed was two-hundred-and-six-thousand-four-hundred, as remaining.
Can you give me that again for the minutes, please?
Now, you have to come to us.
Two oh six four.
Right, you have to come to us, approve those, send it to a town meeting, right?
Yes, so we are presenting those now, if that is okay. That's why we're here, we're coming to you.
Just to clarify, you have two-hundred-and-six-thousand-four-hundred?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So tonight, we voted to move forward, one, two, three, four, five, six items that were requested through six different projects. One of them has to do with the heritage and tourism quarter, so kind of a marketing campaign, if you will, of some sorts. That would include some educational panels, scenic routes, visual documentary, like a YouTube thing that he was gonna do. Basically, that's thirty-five thousand. Then we were going to give seventeen and a half to the Nest, towards the ramp that they wanted to build, the ADA, to get ADA compliant, increase the accessibility of that structure. We have a hundred thousand we were gonna give to the Deep River Master Plan, planning its own, we wanted to do a plan with many different components.
How much did you give, a hundred?
Hundred thousand. So that was a plan that was presented in about five different components. It was gonna be, you know, traffic study, pedestrian, walkable, how walkable we are, parking issues, speeding, small business study, feasibility, accessibility, you know, all this. So we're gonna give them, they were asking for some three hundred thousand. But again, they were asking for the big picture and said, anything they get, they can do different components of that. So we agreed to move forward with that for a hundred thousand. We did all, also agreed to move forward with seventeen and a half for Pandemonium, to help her animal center pathways, signage, little educational piece. And the remaining twenty-five, or not remaining, so twenty-five was gonna go to public art, be installed around downtown. That would help with the EDC component, it would involve local artists, maybe some of the schools. And then anything remaining, we were gonna put in the police line towards a vehicle. But with the, moving forward with the signage of the vehicles, which you already knew or you talked about before, the markings, there was some concern that when the police wouldn't take their vehicles home and they would need a place to change into their uniforms when they got to town. So that might go to renovating the locker rooms that we, in the shower that we have up at the town garage already. But again, right now, that number is sitting at about eleven thousand. But we heard one of the gentlemen, Jerry Roberts, said he would meet with us and he might be able to do what we'd like out of that tourism quarter piece for a little less. So then we would put that into the police item. So the items we want to move forward are the tourism, the Nest, Pandemonium, public art, downtown, Master Plan, and then the police. Those are the things we would, would like your blessing to move forward to a town meeting.
For the finance, are there questions, concerns?
I'm having a struggle with giving individual businesses money from ARPA. Unless you're doing it for a lot of them, to give to businesses this money, I don't support it as a board finance member or as a citizen. I think there's so many other needs in this town, fire department, police department that services all the people, that I struggle with.
Well, we did, so the former administration of the town received one-point-three million, and they proposed spending fifty percent on capital, which would have been six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, twenty-five on social services, three-twenty-five, that would have come out to, and twenty-five on economic recovery, which is three-twenty-five. To date, funds spent are capital, we've spent something like seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand, social services, two-hundred-and-twenty-three, and economic development, we've only spent seventy-five. So this Board of Selectmen thought that would be where we should put more of the money in this go-around, which is the final appropriation.
I still don't see Pandemonium, and that's just economic development necessarily. I'd rather put it towards something Pandemonium wants or something else for economic development. I think that, that's just my opinion.
Compliment, Jessica. I mean, that police guard sure must be paid for by citizens if you don't want him.
Well, again, we thought we were heavy on already spending a lot for capital.
But I think that's fact that we haven't spent a lot on capital, so we're way behind the eight ball on that.
So police and fire were the only ones that were not awarded in this round?
In this round.
But there, this is expending the money that's left.
Right.
So those presentations, because I sat through the presentations, which ones other than police and fire did not get endorsed by the selectmen? I'm just curious, because I don't remember. Extraction tool and five sets of turnout gear, the fire department was asking for a hundred and five thousand. The police vehicle, he was asking for sixty-six thousand. And those were the only two that weren't included? The, well, again, we were gonna, we were gonna partially put something as a baseline, which again, could go towards the vehicle, or if we needed to renovate the locker room, we thought that that could be the money that would go that way.
Carol, what is remaining in the locker room about?
Well, when you get to your questions, you asked the police in that presentation, but we were, we sat down with our resident trooper, and he, he led us to believe that if the, if the officers are taking their vehicles home, then they need, it's a requirement, they need a place to, you know, kind of get dressed when they get here. And we don't have a place here, so if they're gonna leave the cars outside of town hall, historically, the police, the constables would park them up at the town garage. And there is a...
But why they would need a place to get dressed when they got here to go to work? They wouldn't be dressed at home?
No, if they don't drive the cars home, then they'd be driving their private vehicles here. And if you're not in a police vehicle, you don't want to have your uniform on, is what we were told. Is that correct from the police? Well, okay, so sticking with what we were told, the, we do have a locker room up at the town garage now, it's got a shower and a couple of lockers, but it's, hasn't been used to a number of years and it's...
So does this go to them having signage put on their cars? Is that an objection to having the cars lettered? Yes? Why?
Well, Steve might have addressed it in his question.
I guess he's read that yet.
He wrote letters that said that there is increased animosity towards police, and there was some feeling that they wouldn't, it's safer having them at home and having their parked gears, like they marking, lighting, security, et cetera, et cetera. And I don't remember details, but there seems to be, if they were stopped or something happened, they're probably in their personal car while wearing a uniform. There are some rules in my abilities around that. So...
So I want to be clear, if the cars are lettered up, they're refusing to take the cars home. Therefore, they will take their personal cars home, but they need a locker room to come in and change.
Correct.
So that being said, they want to park in my veterans' way here. And there'll be specific parking spots where it's, well, then we need cameras, they need a locker room upstairs to change. We don't have the room here. So up at the town garage, the town garage was built back in late eighties, early nineties, I don't remember what it was, way back then, there was one bay up there for the constables. Back then, we had one car. Troopers would go there, there's a locker room, they'll get changed, take the car out, and they'll do their shift. Come back, park it, change. Well, that's pretty dirty up there. We all toured the town garage a month ago. So we said, if they're gonna hold us feet to the fire by not taking the cars home, we said we already have the infrastructure built up there. We could take the money, clean it, put new lockers, put a clean shower, new toilets, and that's where we're talking about the extra money. I have a hard time with it, and I said to Trooper Kraus yesterday, you're gonna tell me that these gentlemen are gonna forebode a free car or free gas because it's lettered up? I, no, I have a problem with that, but they're the ones that have to drive it home, not have to drive their own vehicle from wherever they live to town.
So I'm still not clear on, is there a prohibition to wearing your uniform in a car if you're not on duty? You can't, because you're both police cars?
It's dependent upon the department, in my experience, over twenty-five years. I, if I was driving my personal car into work before I had to take my car, I would cover my, my patches, because I was driving into Ninh Bay and on the midnight shift. And although I would be armed and, but I would just wear a jacket over, over my police uniform, so that people didn't know that I was a policeman, a police officer coming in on my own, you know, without backup at that line. I don't have a police, I don't have a radio in my car to call for backup. So I'm just going to work that way, and then, you know, just taking my jacket off and maybe get some better patches. But that was just my personal experience.
And to my knowledge, we're probably one of the few towns that don't have lettered police cars.
I, I think that's the hearsay. I have not done research. I know the neighbor in town of Chester doesn't have marked cars. Essex does.
Seabrook does.
Westbrook does.
Many that we can think of do, but I haven't officially done them since then.
But they're making no lockers there too?
Well, we were told that would be a department.
Female lockers.
So it's, you know, you just keep going deeper and deeper and deeper.
But somewhere it has to end.
You spend two hours as a police officer.
Yeah, it ends by, just not... That is the ultimate goal, I think.
Our goal or the police department's goal?
The police department's goal.
To not have lettered cars.
I think the, yes.
But the decision's been made.
The decision's been made, and I think there are practical solutions to the questions that were being raised. It's just gonna take additional investigation, exploration of the site there. It's just going to take additional visualization, exploration of the site there, the, the town building, et cetera, et cetera. But I think it's all workable.
Would that be a consideration for use of ARCA money then? Because it would benefit the citizens in town to know that there are police cars around that you can identify at any given time. And let me finish my thought, to use ARCA money to refurbish the lavatory for them, or a dressing room for them, whatever they need. I'm assuming that they can take their showers at home.
Well, that's kind of what we said right here.
Of the remaining.
That's the money. That's the money. Four hundred. To go towards.
Well, it's a, it's a domino effect up there, because when we do that for the constables up there, and we're taking a bay away from the highway department, because the highway department uses that bay now.
What, what does a bay need?
Like a big garage?
They need a whole garage for a washroom and a changing room?
No.
If you drive up to the town garage, you see all the garage doors.
Okay, I haven't been there, but I will.
Those are, those are called bays.
Okay, got it.
As far as one to the left, is where the constables used to use, way back in the day. When they changed it and the constables started taking the cars home, the town, the public works took that spot over. They put their payloader or metal piece of equipment in that bay. So, we're gonna use it for the constables, then we're gonna lose that bay for highway department.
Cars can't be marked outside, I'm just curious.
Well, it has to be on insecurity, they say.
Well, we have to fence them in if they're up there.
Is that what's said now?
Not.
For security.
I do maintain this is all workable.
They're not evidence.
They feel that, um, our town garage, as it stands, the, the outside of the garage is not secure. So that something could happen to the cars if they're parked up there.
Can they cars?
Which cars?
I think something can happen.
Police cars.
Are we throwing firearms at them at night?
But I, that is, you know, I, I hope not, but I don't know if that's standard, so I can't.
It's been brought to our attention also that the town garage wants a gate up there. There's no security up there whatsoever. We, we agree with it. Carol and I and Catherine have talked about it. When the solar people come up and put the solar panels up there, that would be all gated in. They'll be fenced in. We want to piggyback off of that fence and close our town garage versus us spending all the money to fence it all.
Which is what will happen?
What's that?
Which is gonna happen?
Well, I just read an article yesterday that, uh, Verge, or how would you pronounce it, got approval for three solar farms in Connecticut, and Deverve was one. They just got, society council gave them their approvals, so.
Yeah, they're, they're working with the building department, trying to get their permit. They had told us maybe April they would start. They were up there last week, and they're even for.
So is it possible we could just kind of, like, slow this process down until the fence is up and all of that?
Well, yeah, at this rate, that's probably exactly what we're.
Let them pay for the fence.
I wouldn't recommend slowing the process down. I'd recommend that we continue working the way Carol and Dwayne and Trooper Kraus and I talked yesterday, adding in the building department, getting this down to a project plan and moving forward. I personally do not think delay is the correct approach.
I meant the fence, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
No, we're, we're got a whole bit forward with this. It's like, uh, it's going forward at a, a, you know, snail's pace at this point, but it's moving forward.
I, I think it's unfortunate, and I agree with Dwayne, that the ultimate is, if you lettered the cars up, then we are gonna do X, Y, and Z. It's childish, it's unprofessional, immature, okay? Driving a car home that says police on the car. And I've talked to you before, I've talked to three of my K-Man guys who take lettered cars home. One lives in Middletown, one lives in East Windsor, one lives in Portland. I asked them if they ever felt unsafe parking a Mark Cruiser in the driveway, they said no. We just hired a gentleman from Rocky Hill, they have take-home cruisers that say Rocky Hill Police. He lived on the Weathersfield line near Hartford. He did not feel unsafe. However, that's the car that's being played. I don't think anyone should be bullied or held hostage that those cars are not gonna be lettered up. It's been voted on, the funds have been put there, it is what it is. There's also apparently, and I don't know if this was brought up, three might quit if the cars are lettered up. If that's the case, then so be it. We can hire someone else. But the residents should not be held hostage because we're gonna put a sticker on a car that belongs to the residents that say police, so they can be readily identifiable if somebody is held. It's just ridiculous.
We, we are all in agreement, yes.
And it's unfortunate.
It is, but we thought if we, we're faced with that, then we, that there's ability to use some of that money to maybe use the showers or something.
Listen, I'm all for it by may. Uh, with having a place for the officers, if they need to, like, if they're exposed to something, they need to change suddenly, we've had bad days where things like that happened, where I had to change my uniform because there was some kind of something that, that I was exposed to, okay? So certainly, for a safe place for somebody to get changed if they need to. But looking to conventional policing, I certainly think that it should be, there should have to be enough lockers up there, a space as well. And not just assuming that it's going to be inaccessible for, for everyone. Hey, the stickers are happening, changes are, it seems to be already releasing, so I acknowledge that, but I wanted to know that we absolutely support the mission of policing and a hundred percent want us to look over the safety of our, our community. And outside of what, I mean, lookers, when my, my little girl was excited about seeing police cruisers that are marked on, on Main Street.
Well, okay, so that was, uh, so besides the objections, we'll move that forward, right? With the.
Well, I think we have to make a motion.
Okay.
So is there more discussion?
Does anyone wish to make a motion to accept the recommendations from the Selectment or ARCA? We'll go first, second, and then if we want more conversation. Do I have a first to accept their recommendation?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation. Is that a good idea?
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I kind of agree with Jackie that if it's private business, private industry, then it shouldn't be necessarily ARCA funds that are given to it unless it's gonna benefit the greater population. But our thing, I think, is great, I mean, whatever, and I have a personal preference for that. The, um, traffic study for the planning and zoning, I'm not quite sure I understand all of that.
Parking study, we, we, that would type me wrong, it's a parking study.
Meaning what, looking for parking spaces in towns?
I believe so. Doing the study to figure out where there could be parking.
Is that study, will it have to be done periodically? Or is this extra? I wasn't quite sure how to follow this conversation.
I don't think it's ever been officially done. Uh, you know, and again, there's people that don't think we need it, other people thought it would be useful. But it, it's part of their overall master plan.
We're doing a master plan, we're required to do that. Is this part of that? Or if, would the town have to pay for this if you don't give them money?
Well, the master plan you're talking about, the POCD, or whatever it's called, POC, whatever.
Yes.
Yeah. But this was one of the members who works for our architectural firm, and it would bring out each individual piece. And then we'd have a kind of shovel wedding, so when, uh, grant money came available, you could further then delve into, you'd know where we want to further study, or where we want to fund additional monies to carry out that, whatever the recommendation was, perhaps in that section. So again, he asked for three hundred in the amount, he thought we could do chunks, so we thought giving him a hundred was a good way to start having a master plan at the town.
I would agree with Jackie, or Carmel. I'd rather see a police car, because if I don't see a police car, it's gotta be a citizen that's paid for this.
Well, also, there are other things on the list, like a roof for the library and things, and rest of their windows. So I've got concerns, at some point, we're gonna have to pay for those.
You're taking it to an extreme. If we have art on our buildings, which is very nice, I think someone will ask the question, I've got art on a building, why don't I have a police car that I don't have to pay for? I just, I'm pushing my, because.
Well, I think there was some thought too, is if, if the police are parking their cars here, if, so if they aren't taking them home, then do we need as many cars as we have? If the guys are coming in to work a shift, and we have four cars sitting there, you know.
Good point.
I mean, you know, Trooper Kraus said, probably there are days where we will need them all, because you'll have somebody that, you know, doing like, uh, something with the tree company, or something like that, you know, it would be different things, or an event or something. But so I, I don't, maybe there'll be a point where we don't really need any police car, I'm not sure.
All right, we got a first, we got a second, we have more discussions. This call vote, all those in favor of accepting the recommendation?
Wait, wait, when, when does this money have to be spent by, or has to be allocated? Distributed by?
Emory knows all the answers, start from there.
December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, all dollars must be committed. That means if you are purchasing goods, they have to have been ordered. That means if you are going to require services, a contract must be signed.
By December?
December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
For me? That's not your question, spend is your question, right?
Dollars don't have to go out the door until December twenty-first, twenty twenty-six.
So decision has to be made by December? Money has to have been spent by twenty, just twenty twenty-six?
Yes.
Okay. So we still have some time? Okay, then, my question.
All right, excellent discussion. All those in favor of accepting the recommendation of Selectment, moving this to a down meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I don't vote.
Well, if we, if we modify.
All those abstaining.
If we modify and we take out Pandemonium and the Nest, because those are two individual properties, if I might have heard what you're saying, then we would move forward with the public art, the thirty-five thousand for the heritage and tourism corridor, and a hundred thousand for the P and C. And then that would leave us thirty-five and eleven, that would leave us forty something, forty-six, four. So then we could put the forty-six, four towards the police car.
Or the locker rooms.
Or the locker rooms.
I'd rather say go for locker rooms.
And then we buy either locker room or a half a car, two thirds of a car.
All right.
Is there a split issue with the dump needs to be capped too?
There is, that's on my other thing. Kind of looking ahead for next year's monies type of thing by town. So let's finish with the ARCA. So would that be more reliable to the board of finance if we did that?
Carol, you could argue that the Nest having a ramp benefits a number of citizens in town. If it's for disabled kids, to be able to access that place to go for recreation, club work, coffee, doing crafts, whatever, that would be a town-wide, well, not net town-wide, but a component that benefits the town.
It could, and somebody argued it could be considered like a social services expense because they do have, they also entertain, and she told me there was a local youth group that wanted to come in, and two of the students weren't allowed, were unable to access because they were in a wheelchair, in a wheelchair, so.
But remember our logic, if we want to still keep with this logic, we're following from the previous administration. I mean, left to my own devices, we were at the beginning, I would put it all directly to social services and capital expenses, that's just how I'm wired. But we, we've been through a couple of iterations with this. We decided we were gonna do fifty percent for capital, twenty-five social services, twenty-five economic development. Between the last administration and what we've done so far, we're now down to the economic development tranche of decisions. So our thinking is economic development, and we're looking at all of these. Um, I'll play devil's advocate on, although it is a nonprofit, um, Pandemonium is generating tremendous excitement and activity, and people are coming to the town exploring, it's kind of amazing to watch it. We think about sustain, um, accessibility and signage and tourism, more people coming in, connecting that as a destination with what's gonna happen with the Jerry Richard Tourism, it's kind of mixed together and makes sense. So, um, and candidly, the Nest has brought a lot of people into the town. I don't know if they're all spending at the Nest there, or if it's additional, but that's, that's how I think we looked at it, those two. And we had to get our heads around it at first, because they were nonprofits and it was similar entities, but they're growth, they're two growth areas in town. That's how we were thinking, and again, it was all an economic development.
But weren't there some thoughts on economic development, of looking at like drawing something out of where the incubator buildings are and things like that? Is with this money not in that respect, trying to bring business into town, rather than on businesses that are already in town, two individual businesses already in town?
It's an interesting approach. And, you know, we had a very vibrant economic development committee last week, and with a series of new ideas, where they want to do things on Main Street, et cetera, et cetera. That just hasn't been on the list, and the longer we have the monies, the more we get new ideas. But that might be a good way to spend things as well.
But I think, Jackie, like, that's what we're hoping, Jerry Roberts, that whole marketing piece, you know, the people that were at the presentation saw he had, you know, there was a lot going on, you know, the video part and the signage and the, uh, the routes, either biking or driving routes and, um, so right, trying to get people into Deverve. And then the, the public art and the P and C package, we do think those are all gonna be good economic development drivers.
All right, let's tolerate that we've already made a first and a second, we've had lots of discussion. We can do that again. Well, I don't know whether to call for another first or second, since they've changed their proposal.
No.
I'd like to have a cap a little bit more time and think about these things. I'd like to go through their descriptives again myself, so I really understand what we're being asked to spend money on. I remember hearing that man at the town meeting upstairs, Jerry Roberts was at, but I still wasn't paying like really money attention to him. And then other, there, another man came in asking for ARCA funds or something.
Here's Jerry's presentation, we'll have to see it.
You do, nice, yes. Uh, following Carmel, let's go, Carmel will say, let's table the first and the second, and not accept it. So, do I have a count?
Wait, before we, I think we have, we voted down the first motion, as far as I could tell. I mean, for the minutes, let me be clear, we have one yes and four no's. And you just, so then you came back with a second proposal. I think we need a motion on that before we can address what Carmel said.
That was my question.
Well, I unfairly said that, because Dwayne and I whispered, but Catherine wasn't on board, so. What is it, what we, we just said if we took Pandemonium and the Nest out for now, and then we, we still have some money, you know, we could still come back to it.
Are Jerry Richards and a hundred thousand, P and C, and left the rest of it?
Is this the P and C plan too?
No, that's Jerry Roberts. But there's a lot of overlap, you know, as you, when you're upstairs, a lot of, like, we gotta get better signage, we've gotta do this, you know? And that's, Jerry had a lot of those components, and, um, the public art, when he presented, had a, a lot of components, so we thought those really meshed well.
So, the three, your proposal to this go-around, it would be the heritage tourism, the planning and zoning, and then you're adding a third of the art on the public art.
Right. And then we leave the other two off for now, which is.
Could we just clarify for me? We had one point three million.
Yes.
We've said fifteen, twenty-five, twenty-five. To date, what have we approved? How much of, how much was capital of that fifty percent?
Total spend, oh, so capital, uh, we spent seven hundred and ten, five hundred and five. Social services, we spent two, two, three, one hundred. Economic development, seventy-five. Total spend to date is one million ninety-three, six hundred, leaving us with two oh six, four hundred.
So we're a little low with the social services side management as well?
A little low, right. But economic development was really low, so that's where we come out.
So that's why.
But again, the Nest, we did say that could be social services or economic development, so we did think of it that way too, but.
All right.
But we're close, we're close to the fifty, twenty-five.
Because we meet again, you meet again next week, we can readdress if you want. I don't want you to.
Do you want to, uh, one more time as well, for your recommendation?
Are you comfortable with that for now?
I was never that big on the art. I put it in as a total of a package. If we're just moving three forward, if we're thinking about the other investments, it's maybe not as much. Um, I'd like us to think a little more on that. I'm very comfortable moving forward the heritage tourism and the planning and zoning. I'm very comfortable moving forward the heritage tourism and the planning zone.
We'll just table on top.
All right, so we'll table that one.
And could we have a little bit more information? Like, do we have, do you guys have information sheets on all this stuff? Or is it on the list someplace that we can?
Well, it's on the list like this, you know, like little.
So that's as much information as you have?
Well, I could certainly write more up for you, but that's, we just summarized it to make that little spreadsheet for ourselves.
We've got something for planning zone, Carol, that might, I don't think, they haven't wiped out.
Oh yeah, he had like a sample master plan. Okay. All right.
There is some breakdowns up here.
So more detail on it actually.
This is the Pandemonium, the planning zone, we're close.
Carol, you have more things to add that you wish?
Oh yeah, okay. All right, so table on the art book. Animal control officer, we need to vote on that at a town meeting. The contract was never approved officially by our legislative body, which is town meeting. We do have to find some money to cover all our expenses to date. We are putting everything in contingency right now, but that's going to end up going over. We've spent about 6,500 on the vet.
Wait, you got to set up what you're talking about. I'm not sure everyone.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we seized a number of dogs and some chickens. And we condemned a house for the time being. It is, the occupants are back in there. A court case went on. The town of Deep River has taken ownership of 40 few dogs. And at this point, we have another dog pregnant that was found to be pregnant in our care. So now we have 40, 46 really that we have control of. So we've incurred a lot of expenses, fed expenses, 6,500 dollars so far. About $18,000 the cost to clean up the property.
How much?
About 18,000.
$10,000.
And the hotel, Emery, we just paid that. So what was that about?
That was about 1300.
About 1300.
But do we recoup any of these expenses?
So I believe how it works is that the Connecticut state statute houses, we have, we're responsible if it's a building code enforcement. We're responsible for $4,000 a person. So we're responsible for $8,000 of putting the folks up or cleaning their house or whatever. The rest can come back to the town either by a lawsuit or by putting a lien on their property. Right now, we're trying to recover some of the vet bills from the owner of the dogs. But I don't know if that's, we're going to be successful. I don't know what her financials, you know, statuses are. So we're just, at this point, we have to be, we're going to pay upfront for these things on our end, which right now, we're putting them in the contingency line, which we know will totally go over.
And that's approximately how much, sir? Just for the vet bills and the dogs?
16, 65 and 13. So probably about 27.
That includes the 18 for cleaning the house?
Yeah.
Oh, I was, I had the 18, the 1300, I was.
65?
65, yeah.
Now, we have been putting them into contingency.
Yes.
With exceeded contingency. Emery would like to set up, actually two, are we intermingling conversations?
Sort of, kind of, because we started by mentioning a contract that we need to have the town, helping us provide a five for the new setup for a, we'll call it a tri-town animal control officer. To that end, from a accounting perspective, right now, in our special services function, our expenditure report, we have two lines on there. One is for animal control officer salary. The other is for the dog run lease, not in Essex. And now we'll be just contributing money directed to Essex that will kind of, you know, pay for everything as Carol and our animal control officer.
And the dog run is in there, by the way.
The dog run is in there. But she is now a full-time employee of the town of Essex. So we are helping to offset the overall cost there. But now with the evolution of this case that we are currently discussing, the decision has been made that all legal fees and vet bills associated with these things will go directly back to the town that is encumbering them for as before. It's kind of formed into the contract. So I'm going to propose, after discussing the situation with our auditors, creating two new accounts. Facing out the old two and then having two accounts, one for that, you know, annual contribution to the town and the other for the more variable vet and legal fees.
And there is some thought about maybe setting up a, kind of a revenue account or something so that maybe we have a continual like dog, dog adoption or a dog welfare account or something, or, you know, animal welfare. And that way, it's seeded a little bit if people want to make a donation or something and have forbid this happen again. But again, any animal that's collected in our town, seized or picked up, it goes in the, and then the way the agreement is now, we would cover the cost. So if a dog is hit outside town hall, you know, no identifying characteristics or whatever, animal control officer takes it to the vet, we're incurred those costs. So it might just be a way, if the public wants to donate or something, that we always have like a little fund there to cover food or whatever expenses we might need.
That wouldn't be in the lease accounts?
No, 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 but that might be a separate revenue account. Kind of a donation line. Some, I was told that some towns have kind of a similar thing like that. So like a little rainy day fund for an animal situation.
Sure. What do you think of Emery's idea of setting up new accounts? Sounds awfully logical. Recognize the new expense for the joint animal control officer and that we will have expenses. This year, we'll have large expenses, but hopefully we won't have those. But seems awfully logical. And we will eventually abandon the two that we have. They will need to be with us for a couple of years until.
So the two being?
Two being the third, the animal control officer account?
Salary.
Salary. Is that the right word to call it salary since there's also other?
That's what we're.
And the second one is this?
The dog run lease.
And this would go into a totally separate account?
Uh, no, no, different line item. On each of our budget.
Okay. What goes into a separate account?
Well, currently, there's two line items in our budget. There's one for like dog pound or something. And then there's one for animal control officer. So Emery's saying we can kind of combine.
But what about all these expenses with all these animals and chickens and whatnot? And where does that, all that money come from?
Right now, we're taking out of the contingency line.
And you want to set up a separate account?
Which is over, so moving forward to next fiscal year.
I don't know. I think Emery's going to move, move into them right now.
Because right now, it's either buried in contingency or in one of these two referenced dog accounts, which now their titles are obsolete for the way we're operating. So I'm just trying to make the important clear.
But we will have spent considerable, give me a number here. How much have we spent?
It's about 20, 26, 27,000.
Do you expect more?
Until the animals are adopted, they're still in our camp. So there could possibly be more vet fees and.
Do they make a donation when they adopt?
That is our, our goal is to ask for suggestive donations.
Are they starting to go up for adoption?
But they will come back to the camp. Will donations come back to the town?
That's what we're trying to set up.
No, you're trying to set up a contribution. If people just love animals, want to give money. The adoption fees will come back to the town.
No, what I'm trying to set up is adoption fees coming back to the town. More in a greater amount than is allowed. So the state statute, and maybe that sounded funny. If you, if you, right now, it's an obsolete state statute, if you ask me. When you adopt from a public pound, you only, it only costs you $5. It's $5. The town is allowed to spend, to charge up to 150 to cover vet bills, which includes spay and neuter. Some of the legal interpretation is that if we don't spay and neuter, you don't cover any of your vet bills. Now, you cannot take an animal to a vet for anything under 150. It doesn't even get you in the door most of the time. So to then only, we've spent all this money on these animals and then to only be allowed to charge $5 for the adoption. Actually, it's $45. 40 goes to the state, 5 comes back to the town. I've talked to at least three different lawyers about this and it's very interesting. But if we ask for a suggestive donation for the animals of 200 to 50, which people that adopt animals are used to spending a lot of money. And then at least we could, but then we have to work it out that it comes back to the town. The state could still get their $40 and then we would get the extra. But again, each dog, we've spent at least $160 on, even if it's, you know, like eye, brain or ear, you know, I mean, you cannot walk into a vet and, you know. Although the Clinton vet has been very nice. They've waived, waived all the office visits, if you will, you know. So we're working on that, but right now, it doesn't look like we'll get, we'll get much in the adoption fees if we're not allowed to do that suggested donation idea. But again, I think people are very reasonable if they're going to adopt, especially a puppy. They're going to be willing to, at least to help the town break even with our vet bill for that dog. I mean, for that particular, you know.
Are these young dogs, puppies, the old crickety dogs, what?
Well, we already, we put some on our website last week. I think there's nine on there now. There's three puppies, there's some older dogs. So if you go on the town webpage or the town Facebook page, you'll see. So she's accepting donations for all those dogs. But these, you know, some of these puppies were, were, the breeder was giving $1,500 for the puppy.
Yeah.
So that's, so I'm working on it. I just really want the town to, I want it to be fair to the town. We've put in on, Carolyn's done an amazing job, our animal control officer, taking care of them.
Can you work with the local animal rescue groups? There's one out of Chester and there's one in Westford. Would they be able to help the town in Deep River with some of this?
Carolyn's been working with quite a few groups. And a few of the older dogs, she's filmed like a poodle rescue that took, we had a very older dog that was blind and we had people that foster, you know, certain breeds, certain ages. There's foster families out there that just, and it's wonderful. People are wonderful.
Do you have a lot of donations?
Lot of, well, it really helped the, all the dry, you know, dry goods, if you will. You know, the pee pads, the food and all those kind of things. That saved us hundreds of dollars. And the donations were just amazing.
Have you shot at Adams this week and round up? It's for the dogs.
Yes, the hometown foundation reached that spending. They're trying to help cover our vet bills. So if you round up at Adams this week, it'll come back to the town.
So Emery, how do you, if they send money from the supermarket, where are the charts at? What do we got there?
I think it was.
miscellaneous revenues or are we going to do a contract account here?
I wouldn't have your contract account here.
Okay.
I, we would have to go on miscellaneous revenues. So we're just keeping track of it separately, you know, in case we could decide that we want to ship these into a separate physical.
All right, I'll move forward on my other stuff. So park and act director, they had counted a person they liked. He really wanted 10,000 more than what we were offering. I know you guys told me there was some wiggle room or that I, I had some latitude to work with that. But I wanted to come back to the board of finance to get any kind of approvals to make that offer. And then the other thing, so we can talk about that. We've been looking into the pension for the town hall employees that are, are owning that pension. And we had a firehouse meeting again, trying to move that forward. So I don't know how that's going to work with the school because we were saying at the last meeting for the new firehouse, you know, it's sort of the worst, what's it called? The storm, the world perfect storm, right? We're like, finally going to do the firehouse and now we got moldy. And then, oh, upgrades to the transfer station. Something to look forward to next year. Maybe 75,000. I don't know what it's going to cost to do a new gate, reconfigure the driveway, just to sort of get that moving forward. But we do have to cap the landfill. I was supposed to meet with Jacobson the other day and do a walk through out there. Then it snowed on us last week or whatever it was. And then the other thing, I'd really like some money to do a cybersecurity audit. So I'd like to maybe see if we can put that in next year's budget. That's about 15,000. And then Catherine has gone over the WPCA bonds. And we talked about it at the board of selectmen meeting. And I will let Catherine present what she did, but we did make a motion to move something forward. But I guess I'll let you do your presentation first.
Thanks, Carol. I have to say on this is Catherine Russell and George Eckenroth because as I said in the board of selectmen, both PhDs finance came into play. It's just pretty much as though formalizes, you know, we had some conversations. We, we had some, definitely have one?
This was what we seemed to be all through us, right? It's the same thing, I want to make sure of all.
No, so there's, maybe so. Is it, yeah, I don't know.
It says so.
Okay, I believe it's the same thing.
February?
Okay. So basically, it isn't wondering as we look at the payments on the bonds. And, you know, when we did that chart, it came up, we're paying 350,000 dollars a year to pay down three active bonds on the sewers. And that's, you see the three active bonds on the 234, whichever document you're looking at. And you see how much is due. One, one expires in two years. The others are running out through 2055 and 2056. So Bud and I had a couple of sessions where we went through the old auditor's reports from the town just to get a sense of who was paying the principal payments and the interest over the years. And when you look at page five, I mean, you can't see the version that Bud gave you, but when it's color coded, it really jumps out at you. You see that from the beginning, when we started doing this near 2000, the town paid for seven years, they paid everything. Then we went into four years where we had a shared payment. And it was a shared payment, but candidly, the lion's share of that shared payment was paid by the WPCA. Then we went into four years, 2011 through 2014, when the WPCA paid everything. We have an interest. Then we had two years, when again, it was shared between the town and the WPCA. And then from 2016 on, it has been totally paid for by the town. So when we looked at this, we thought, we have history of different ways of approaching this. And that gives some deliberity to the thought that we don't necessarily want the town or need to have the town pay for all of this. That is what our thinking is. And the selectmen asked, well, is there a reason behind all of this? When things happen, we did some forensic accounting work and we think some changes happened when new bonds were made. A couple of times, you had a new bond, eight for an extension or earlier for a consolidation. But we also really don't know because if you get to 2017, that's when we had our first selectman pass away. And we don't know if that, what was decided previously had been on a handshake and not written down. We really just don't know. But when we look at this, we do have the information then that there is a variation in how the bonds have been paid. So what we'd like to put before you, and the selectmen agree with this, is that we begin a form of discussion with the WPCA of asking them for this next budget cycle we're going into, to pay a certain amount. And we spoke about what amount we thought going in a 50-50 share was a good position. Bud, have I covered that a little bit well?
We've covered it fine.
Okay.
We've covered it fine. Board of financiers, any thoughts? We've talked about it, board of financiers. We'll just, we will, I don't, we can continue the conversation. Bring them in during budgets. Talked about.
So the total, I guess, the total payment per year is 350,000.
That's correct.
So if we're to do 50-50, we're looking at WPCA paying 175.
We are, and that would be for two years. And then one of them goes away. And in fact, the largest chunk of it goes away, 200, almost 3,000 a year goes away in two years. And then we're asking them to, let's see, 24, 25 years, to pay half of, approximately 145,000 dollars.
How many people are on this or one? How many separate?
435.
So you would, we divided that 175 by 435, 135.
Most of the regulations and contracts, all of them.
And Jackie, when you look at page five, there's a column there that I didn't talk about. It says WPCA cash balance. And you took a look at, you know, what, what was the total of funds? What did they have with the cash, cash? was the cash position every year? And, you know, sitting here just looking at the numbers, we don't know what the plans for this are, you know, capital investments, et cetera, et cetera. But it looks like they have funds to enable them, the organization has funds to enable them to pay half of this cost.
Yes, just go with the yes. They currently have funds to accumulate. If you look at their accounting statement, they generate about a hundred thousand dollars a year in capital, cash in excess of their costs. So it goes to your question, if we're asking for a head, they will have to increase revenues. According to what I have been told, we're at the max for hauls, so we will have to turn to those on the low, increase their rates.
That's if we want with half. I mean, I don't know that it's gonna be either or, black or white. And I don't know their numbers well enough, and that's what their board would have to look at. But without raising rates, they could contribute, from what you're saying.
Without raising rates, calling upon past cash, they can pay. But if you take two hundred, one hundred and seventy-five, it's not there the following year, so you eventually get them down to the conversation which I do not know which to place, but look at the level of cash that they were paying.
Two hundred dollars.
There is one year they had two hundred thousand, two hundred dollars left over. So obviously, the conversation had to have some part, we don't have the money to keep paying these.
Did you discuss doing increases instead of going right to fifty percent? So it's a little bit slow.
I believe all those conversations are very.
Could there be some ideas that is kind of, let's ask for this, and then if they come in this, then, you know, like start the negotiation.
A lot of people think that's lawful, that is correct, yes. That is correct.
But you know, I mean, and there are many things to think about, the fact that the biggest chunk goes away.
Goes away.
You know, so.
And that was part of the conversation, what, have you noticed that note, the Clean Water Act? They start to pay the entire, as they expanded down Union Street, just Catherine does in mind, they start to pick up the entire cost.
So I think the work you guys have done is fantastic, this is great information. And I support going to them, to have to start this conversation. But I would like to, and maybe I'm a little concerned because I'm on the line, but having said that, I'm also concerned about businesses on Main Street that are on the line. And if you have to start raising fees so that they can pay fifty percent, that could have a huge impact on those four hundred.
Excellent conversation, other than, you're gonna have to, this could, think about, we would be reducing taxes in the.
That's true.
So you get a net effect, which I'm suggesting to go over. So you pay twenty-five more, but we would reduce, what could be the taxes?
But Bud, you are for having them pay something.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So they have, they have been presented with any of this?
In my position to them at the last board, they are a service of this town. The way we provide that service is through that authority and efficiently is presented. But they are a service to the town, they must recognize they are part of the town. And if they are using our assets to generate lots of cash, they should periodically give us some of that cash back so that all citizens benefit from those assets.
And so that's my question, do they have enough of a budget to accommodate fifty percent and fifty percent?
Well, again, the auditors claim they could generate over a hundred thousand dollars of cash in excess of operations. If you go to one seventy-five, they'll have to increase fees.
So maybe we look at some other structure with that to make sure that we're getting it at fifty-fifty two years from now. Maybe we have a pay, not remaining numbers here, but maybe they pay a quarter or a third of it till we finish off the first bond, then we move forward. The other thing I'll say, and this is in complete absence of information, but just thinking of this, like thinking of the money, how are the expenses up there? And are they, are they operating, and again, with absence of information, but just thinking about it, are they operating as tightly as they could be financially, or as they would be if they knew they were going to be, they were expected to pay a portion of these costs? And that's, that's something that that board would have to look at, and maybe our auditors, because they audit their books as well, could give insight to, I don't know, I have no information to make that conjecture, but that would be something that's worth looking at.
Yes. I think the day when we all went up there and toured it, I mean, we showed, saw that they do a phenomenal job of their shooshing of manpower, three gentlemen at work up there, right?
He has everything on computer.
Yeah. So, and I, I think, again, I'm not up there every day, I don't know the inner workings up there, but for the three people up there, I think they do a hell of a job.
And I would say Pete Lewis scrutinizes every bill that comes through that office, and I have seen regular conversations between him and his vendors where he's questioning additional fees. He has more attention to detail than many, many people I've worked with in my career.
But this was having the discussion of asking, see what they can add to.
Absolutely. Yes.
Anything more needs to be done?
Something to look forward to.
So the next step is just go to WPCA and starting this conversation.
Well, how does that happen? I mean, did Bud do that?
Well, certainly I brought it up the last board meeting, what we're doing, brought up the last WPCA meeting. They have met with Carol in response to my report and sent letters. I'll bring it up again at their next meeting. But I do believe we, I believe the selectmen should say, we are expect, we are looking for you to participate. And that puts voice behind it, and we'll bring them into the project workshops.
So does, there need to be a motion by the board of finance to ask you have a conversation? I mean.
No, I think the board of selectmen.
The voice has to be, I believe the voice has to be voice, select. Now, that doesn't mean they're gonna do anything, revenue.
Just tell them all that that was our.
Okay.
They may not do anything, but I think it has to be selectmen to have the voice. And the camera. The bully pulpit has Teddy Roosevelt on it, so yeah. Sorry? I don't mean to dismiss this conversation, I'd just like to move it on.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Excellent. We had, while waiting, a conversation about moving the special police service lines in our town budget, that have been there since, since people walked around with pilgrims, sixteen hundred, I believe. So I have been thinking about that, Emery has done more thinking about creating a separate fund that all the revenues going in for special and all the expenses coming out will be done external to the budget. We chatted about that, and we have proof that maybe there is a generation of cash that could be used to buy a new car, using historical numbers. Do you wish to pass that out or have you passed? Or is that part of the, you already?
Part of the.
All right, if you like.
Looks like this. This looks like this.
Is the color wrong? There you go. There you go, bottom one, first.
I thought we had more.
So, well, you should be, so if you look at what, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, we generated over those five years, is that right? Certainly enough to buy a new car, is that right? Oh, yeah, I'm looking at remaining funds, correct? We would have generated enough to buy, purchase a new car periodically.
Could I just stop for a minute? Are we, is this a given, we're buying a new car, or is this speculation?
This is, this is a way to accumulate funds available.
In the event of buying a new car?
In the event of, but that event seems to occur quite often, so, but yes, in the event of. And if you remember the note we just read from the trooper, he thinks if the fees are lower, this would number would go up. But yes, that is exactly in the event of. And as we quietly discussed, these dollars would be available to the board of finance to bring back into the general revenue if there was a need.
Bud, what are we, what are we getting the revenues on?
Revenues from contractors who hire our constables.
We're just now.
This, this activity is in the budget right now. Now, I've always, I've been under the impression that discourts everything we look at, so. So, unless anyone has any more questions, I would like Jackie to read a resolution, that she may not hold back, so.
No. Folks, a motion to create a separate special services police fund to record revenues and salaries related to special services in this one five budget year. These dollars will be available to return to general fund at the discretion of the board of finance.
Second? Excellent. Although, any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those vote, motion carries. Emery, something for you to do.
Well, thank goodness.
Did we, you talked about, at your public hearing, we have to get permission so that Dan Marie can enter into a contract with the new, do we talk about that? We talked about that, good.
We talked about it at the board of selectmen, that that would be.
Because they won't start working with this until that time comes. When do you think that meeting will be?
Well, we were thinking early March, like the twelfth or something, but that's the Tuesday, so after our meeting, but then I realize you're meeting that. But now, we're gonna kind of get together and talk ARCA again, so.
All right. And private conversation, Emery, if we do not get this started soon, we most likely will not have fees in the new software, I'm sure, right? We may have to get in with the existing software. There's a partial fee to the existing cost of software, right?
So my bigger concern is, we have to keep in mind, you know, the audit is on a one year lag. So if we are spilling between twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year and tracking our expenses in the old system, we will still need to maintain that license in twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year so that we can access that data product.
Just a conversation at this point, correct? All right. The next item on our agenda is to consider recommendations given to us by finance, Emery, about reconciling our budget, after the request of a budget our orders should have been done. If you remember, during every year, we recognize that certain line items will be overspent. We do not make changes, we do not move money from the general fund to that lineup, of course, we just don't know what they are, the total is going to be. We do not, we do not know what amount to even move out of the general fund. We are limited in our ability to, our board of finance, to make changes to a lineup twice. So what we do is at the end of every year, generally in September, we're doing it now in February, we will move money from a lineup that we did not overspend each into each one of those lineups. So, what Emery has done, she has taken each one of, what did we agree we're gonna call it? Each one of the functions in the budgets. So for instance, selectmen, there's lots of items above it, et cetera. You will, you will see the selectmen budget was underspent, but if you continued down to, was it ten, capital operations, we overspent line items of fifteen, one, two, five. We are asking her, already did sum all those over expenditures and move forty-five all the way down, but just happens to be down to forty-five thousand, five hundred and thirteen, five thousand, twenty cents out of the regional school district to cover those over payments. Any questions? This is always a mysterious task.
I'm just dumbfounded we came under the regional core. And are you nervous?
Well, remember the agreement we have with the regional school, you have every right to be dumbfounded or whatever number. Remember the agreement we have with the regional school is that surpluses from prior years that you used to give back to us, they will now reduce their billing, which is why you now have a, what appears to be a surplus. And, and you'll note, and Emery is resistant to me saying this, but if you look, we have underspent way down the bottom, the last year, ending June thirty, seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars, we've underspent our expenditures.
So this is really just an accounting function?
Correct.
Because we've already spent the money, June was a long time ago, and so it's just to clean up the books.
That is correct, and this is the auditors are requiring it. Now, with that, if, oh, I need, I need a resolution.
Do you want to do capital soon?
Well, since I don't need a resolution for capital, I'm not going to, okay? Now, I will read a resolution, proposed resolution of what we have to do on this one.
A motion or a resolution?
I'm going to, I will make a motion that you resolve it. That you. Do I have it? We need to accept the recommendations, I used to have it, we need to accept the recommendation provided to us this evening by the finance director to move, to, for the, to cover the over expenditures by under expenditure. So we need, actually put the dollar amount in there, should we put that into the resolution? So.
Two one.
Good, all right. So the auditors know that we looked at this one. Can I have a resolutions agreeing to what I just said?
Give me the dollar amount.
Forty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty cents over expenditures, and we will move under expenditures of an equal amount to cover those over expenditures. All right? So I move, I go one, go second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those vote, thank you. All right, Emery, take it.
This is a very similar exercise. The auditors put together this, the schedule of changes in fund balance at projects for the capital and non-recurring fund. This is for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. And you can see projects that you are very familiar with, with Sugami, left-hand side, and their funding sources. And if you look at the column all the way to the right, which is the balances of June thirty, you will notice there are two lines on here that are over expended. One is the fire truck for eleven thousand, two hundred and forty dollars, and the other is fire department equipment for nine thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars. After discussing this with the auditors, we decided it would be best to go through a similar exercise. When I asked if they had any suggestions on how we should cover those overages, they directed me to the bottom of this schedule, where you'll see a line for unallocated reserves in the amount of forty-five thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. That money is generated through short-term interest for holding the monies associated with the capital projects and interest-bearing tax. They suggested we pull the eleven and the nine from that forty-five, that after a while there's going to be a schedule to work with.
So there's no action this board needs to take, you're just going to, we have noted that you're going to take some of our available cash and move it to items that we have over expended.
And make the account of course.
These are, this is a new account for us, folks. If you remember, we used to go to the town, we will again, and ask the town to let us spend the volume on your capital. Arguably, that authorization ended at June thirty, we sort of ignored that. Auditor says you can't ignore it any longer. But the good news is, all towns in the state of Connecticut were ignoring it, so the state legislature allowed us to set up this account. So when you get authorization from the town to incur something as capital, a long expenditure, a long life, that approval lasts for a long period of time. That's what you see in this account. All right. The next item is, and I wonder where, how much detail do you wish to put into it? The next item at nine-thirty at night is to go through the budget.
Please skip the recent discussion, the appointments on the general.
Well, good, 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 we did not have any problems. The trooper, Kraus, was going to come, he has been asked on a couple occasions, for particular reasons, to come and just. to come and discuss the over expenditures now in police vehicles. He was not invited to be here because he and his wife now were the... Kraus owners of the new board. Uh, if I had have worked on that, it would have come out much better. But, um, but actually, what's the Paul Newman? She wants that be, or I want that her? Actually, I believe children in America own their parents. So anyhow, he has not been able to be... But he gave us a letter addressing what I believe is adequate to address those issues, unless anyone wishes to ask Carol more questions. Because I think they don't... With that in mind, that then puts us to our budget. Does, at 9:30, does anyone have any specific items they wish to address in the budget? And so... Can Anne Marie remind me? Is there anything specifically driving this in these budgets that we need to call out tonight? Certainly, there's many interesting things, but just tonight is getting late.
Yes. I just wanted to call out two adjustments that I'm going to need to make. One is on page one, under town hall operation for water. It looks as though we are over expended. We are not.
Okay, good point.
We have to reclass about $7,500.
Is that the water line item?
That's the water down to the hydrant service line. And then there was one other similar...
Interesting case, what do you have?
So something by $100. And then the other re-class, I'd like to call it on page five, under waste removal and recycling. It says, though, our recycling is over expended by $4,400, but also going to have to reclass $700 from that line up to the merit of use.
All of the folks who used to work for us, who have chosen to move on to different adventures, who we have an obligation to, all of those payments are now reflected here in salary contingency. Those are $59,000 we gave to those who once were with us. Um, and it's probably worth, at least to mention, we have budgeted $1,000, which a placeholder for unemployment compensation. There are several who have chosen to leave us and filed for unemployment compensation. There could be a fairly substantial couple of numbers coming in there in the future. There are numbers that have already come in but are reflected, not big, but there will be larger ones coming in.
And this line will already be over expended in the next month's report just from some outstanding issues that were recently brought to attention?
Fire department, since Tim is still here and impressing his wife with another date night. Uh, Tim, you have gone over and you have shared with us, you have new staffs who are spending a lot of money in training. Other than that, you have a substantial amount of dollars left. Is it your assumption that you will be able to move some of your... Will you have unexpended in other line item that you could need to cover?
Is that what you're asking us to do?
That is what I instructed. For instance, you have a contingency.
We've been asked not to do that in the past, but we can certainly look into that.
Well, I'm interested in your bottom line. You will have enough left over to cover that contingency, over expenditure, right? You will not go totally over?
We will not go totally over.
Okay. You do have a contingency that you should be able to call upon. Okay.
So there is vehicle maintenance, so that one sometimes gets... I don't know if that one goes on.
Actually, I think Adam sent Anne Marie a note on vehicle maintenance. That's correct. Um, that's getting low. You've got 18 left, 24 percent. You think you will go over? Getting close?
Let me look into that.
Anne Marie, how about recycling fees? Is that right? Did we say that was the right number?
No. I said that's one I reclassed. I need to reclass $7,700.
Oh, okay.
And there's the merit of use.
Discredit.
And you know that's going to increase, definitely, next year.
Yes.
And I shall point out once again, Carol, we're spending loads of money. And we have not applied for that grant yet, have we?
What kind of...
Yes. Okay. Anyone have any additional questions?
I just...
Yeah, I'm pretty careful. Go ahead.
I had prepared a list of questions which I sent out to all of you, but I sent you all a printed copy. You guys, I directed it specifically to you guys, but I gave you all copies of it. These are questions that have come up in discussions when the board of finance... If you could get answers to these, it would really help us during our budget deliberations.
Yeah, we've worked on that. So we got answers to the police. So Steve wrote this letter and has a lot of the answers.
Okay.
The fire department is here. Most of their answers are right in their fire study that was done. And Public Works sent an email, we didn't print off, but all about most of your answers.
Good. So if you have the answers, you can get them to us? Or we're going to be on our own defining answers?
Are we going to discuss those during the budget workshops? Is that how you put them to use?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I assumption. You've got plenty of time, as those departments committee gave.
We're kind of scurrying because I thought it was something else tonight. And so people were...
Just that you guys would be the point to disclose to me the information.
You gave us homework, weren't you?
But you told...
That's a feature of them. Now, speaking of our first workshop next Tuesday, March 5, Carol and Anne Marie believe they are ready for that, or at least enough to get us started. Excellent. At 7, here.
Carol, during your presentation, you mentioned $10,000 for the park and rent director. Do we need to do anything with that? Or you're just moving ahead with it?
I interpret that for us discussion for our budget workshops, or do you expect action?
But I'm assuming you need to hire somebody, so if...
I think we lost that 10, but because we didn't move. If we can start, we can start with that session next week. Do you have to go in a certain order for budget workshop? We do park and rent.
We've got all the way till sometime in the day.
We'll get Mary to come and present.
Was there a little wiggle room left in there? Sally, right?
Well, the wiggle room we left, then he was adamant for about $10,000 more. And they didn't have a second candidate for the neighborhood, so I was kind of stuck that I didn't feel like...
Wiggle room, you can define this, you remember, we put $10,000 in our budget.
He came in knowing the range, and then he went and he asked for 10 more. And I thought that he got through two interviews knowing that that was the range. So when he sat down with me and said, "I want this", and then I was like, "Well, I've got to be wasting my time." Like, why do you... You know, that's how I felt. But I didn't feel like I had the wiggle room power on my own, so...
That wasn't a request, that was just a presentation.
But there's about $9,000 left in the budget. We put money in there to be allocated, some of, most of which went to improve the quality of our finance department. But there's still some money.
Right. But then we talked about some issues. Town hall morale, that's because that's our study, as we all know, so... I didn't feel comfortable just giving it to an unknown entity coming in because he interviewed, knowing what the range was, I kind of thought that was a little unfair. But there was something about it that bothered me.
And revenues are equally doing well. Do you notice the... I don't know if you look at the revenue. I mean, we've collected with them. Personally, I think we have 1% left of our tax revenue. Doing very well.
Carmella, do you want the fire department has that book?
I think I still have that. Has the study done by that company that came in? Yeah, I even have that, from my belief.
Right. So the answers to all of your questions that Carol sent me is... And then some. A lot of good information, so I encourage all of you...
That's current information. That was done one year ago, two years ago?
Correct. Last year.
Okay.
Yep. So I encourage all of you to get a copy of it through the town's website and go through it.
Is it on the town website?
It is on the town website. So I mean, it gives you all of that stuff. Call volumes, day, the time of day when the calls come in, average response times. All of that is all in this report.
The only thing that becomes less and less current is the place the cost of new apparatus. The costs of new fire trucks are going up quickly and significantly. And every year, if there's a delay, it's a much bigger increase in the cost of new apparatus than you think. I mean, far exceeds the cost of inflation. It just, it's staggering how quickly the prices are going up. They're never coming back down. Keep that in mind.
So a percentage increase per year might be what?
We actually have a document from the vendor consultant that worked with us on the last engine that we're going to have with us at the budget workshop that spells out how those costs get to where they are. They spelled it all out. So we'll get all of your copies of that.
Because things increase every year. You know, once you pay last year, you're not going to pay next year. But is there a baseline percentage increase that happens with fire trucks? Or is it just...
They spelled it out, you know, building materials, the chassis cost alone, just the percentage increase in just an identical same chassis of what we have in the truck delivery of last year. They broke all that down, so we'll have that pointed for the budget workshops. You can look through it.
The lead times have been increasing too, right? The lead times...
Lead times are on like three years.
Three to four years.
Do they anticipate those improving, though?
Not that I have heard, not yet.
And then you run into additional cost increases such that there's new government regulations for emissions on diesel engines. And if you don't get an order in by a certain time where you get grandfathered into the current status, then it moves to the next generation that has new government regulations. So it was $50,000 just for that.
Just for the engine alone.
Yeah. Just to make it that more compliant for emissions. So are you looking at jumps like that?
Yeah. They did a nice job with a pretty simple breakdown of how these costs get to where they are. We'll have it for you. Thank you for giving that info. Caution.
It is that time, folks. Unless you have any other business, it is time for us to adjourn. Because I have a motion to adjourn. All those things. Thank you. All right, folks, we'll see you next Tuesday night, right here.